Mr. Jennings.
In the four months, in four months' time, the 2022 Clearwater Comic-Con Committee planned, budgeted, and produced an incredible event for our citizens to participate in and enjoy. The fantastic event brought in over 1,500 people, which doubled the expectation that was anticipated by the organizing committee. The amazing, this amazing partnership between the library system and the Ross Norton Recreation Complex overcame logistical challenges, lined up quality guests and vendors, and combined a love of reading, art performance, costume, fandom, and fitness. Thank you for putting on this wonderful event that allowed our citizens to interact with great partners and a great team, and for the tremendous impact on our community this event had. Thank you.
Is this going to be an annual event, Krista?
You guys could get up and come over here.
Did you go over to Comic-Con? It was wrapped.
Can you pass that to everybody, please? Next, if I could have Sherman Stroman come forward, our City of Clearwater Diversity Manager for our Juneteenth proclamation. How are you, Sherman?
Good, aren't you guys?
Good. Whereas people from all nations make up our country who have been declared to have equal rights in justice, life, and the pursuit of happiness, and whereas the Emancipation Proclamation made the permanent abolition of slavery, a Union War aim, and provided the legal framework for the emancipation of nearly all 4 million slaves as the Union Armies advanced, and whereas on June 19th, 1865, almost two and a half years later, Major General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas, and announced the end of both the Civil War and slavery, and whereas Texans began the celebration of Juneteenth in 1866 and is the oldest celebration of the ending of slavery in the United States, and whereas on June 17th, 2021, President Biden signed legislation making Juneteenth a federal holiday and enshrining June 19th as the national day to commemorate the end of slavery in the United States, and whereas the City of Clearwater embraces and observes this national holiday, celebrating African-American culture, and will continue to honor and champion inclusion and diversity throughout the city. Now, therefore, I Frank V. Hibbert, Mayor of the City of Clearwater, Florida, on behalf of the Clearwater City Council, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2022, to be Juneteenth in Clearwater. We encourage all residents and visitors to celebrate this true expression of freedom, the United States' value of freedom for all, and continue to honor the African-American communities, which are now a vital part of our country.
Thank you, thank you. I just want to say thank you once again, I can't say it enough, council members, mayor, city manager John. Like the proclamation mentioned, I think this is a celebration from all of us as Americans, as it speaks to one of our foundations as this country was, was brought up on, and that was freedom for all, as we say to pledge. So, just to, to know and understand the history impact of, of the celebration and, and what it means to a lot of group of people, it speaks volumes that, once again, we're able to embrace it and, and move forth, we've, we've celebrated it and making it part of our, our city culture. So, thank you all tremendously, appreciate it.
Thank you for all your passion and what you're doing.
Thank you.
Next, I'd ask if there are any amendments to the minutes of the June 2nd, 2022 meeting?
Move to approve the minutes?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? This time, I'd like to open it up to citizens to be heard. If there are any citizens in the audience that would like to speak to items that are not on the agenda, you can find agendas off to my right in the very back of the room. Please come forward, we ask you to state your name for the record, and respectfully ask you to keep your comments to three minutes.
My name is Jerry McGuire, I live at 1100 Turner Street. And first thing off the bat, I'd like to say Mark Bunker, you've done a great job, truth, justice, the American way of life on planet Earth. I'm not going to criticize Captain Beckman, but, you know, you're starting below animal cruelty, okay? He's recognized a global humanitarian, okay? Can you tell me a place in the United States of America where there's more human trafficking, rape, pedophilia, you know, forced abortions, people brainwashed with overdoses of cognitive therapy, which is like I being a heroin dealer, okay? You're, you're involved with MKUltra, you violated federal law. You didn't have that right to do that under the law. It is MKUltra. The McDill Air Force Base has been doing this stuff for years, Frank, okay? Experts had ruled on this, okay? We don't need you guys to stand up there with this clown show, okay? You took $100 million of taxpaying dollars, okay, which belonged to Aaron Smith Levens and the Aftermath Foundation for what you guys did, okay? Now, you guys did this, I'm not blaming you, and I, it's definitely not blaming you, you're a champion, best son that's been here, better than Gabe Casares, as far as I'm concerned, and I think that, 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 you know, your opinion of, of, who was it, they're trying to turn you into Alberto Acosta, okay? You're not Alberto Acosta, okay? He's a fan of you, he was always a fan of you. As a matter of fact, I think he joined as a, as a, as a, what was he, the Catholic Church, he was the usher, or whatever, yeah, after he met you, because this guy's got a job, like, he doesn't get a paycheck every week, and he's going to continue with that paycheck, he's trying to smooth this over, and he's not going to do it, he's not going to smooth anything over, okay? Right off the bat, you, you shouldn't have done this. This is rape, this is pedophilia, you're trying to act like you're not responsible, and Hamilton's not responsible. You're not, you're responsible, you knew that he was political mafia since you were a little kid. I knew it, everybody knew it, okay? And you'll be able to find what I am saying is true, that Hamilton family was political mafia, you knew it, no different, don't tell me Hubbard sat on that deck with him. That's who he's looking for. We got this whole scam show here, we're done with it. Pick up the phone, call the General McDill, he's done this plenty of times before, Frank, it's not the first time. The CIA, the FBI is flag base international, Frank. You got a police station that's right next to the pedophilia. What do they do there? They hold the kids down so the children get sloppy seconds, the Hamilton and a five-year-old kid? We're done with it, Frank, we're done with it, okay? Give them money to friggin' Aaron Smith Levens, give it to the Aftermath Foundation. You told the truth when Leah Remini came down here, she, I'm a ten factor in whatever she says.
Thank you, Mr. McGuire. Have a good night.
We're done with it.
Okay. Anyone else for citizens to be heard? All right, seeing none, I would ask if there are any items from the public or from the council to come off the consent agenda, items 7.1 through 7.7. Seeing no one from the public, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve items, agenda item 7.1 through 7.7.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Item 8.1.
Approve the 2022 Affordable Housing Inventory List by meeting the requirements of Chapter 166.0451 Florida statutes adopts Resolution 22-13 and authorize appropriate officials to execute same.
Thank you, Chuck Lane, Economic Development Housing Department. Because we receive allocations of state housing initiative partnership funding from the state, we are required by state statute to produce a list of city-owned properties that are appropriate for use as affordable housing. Council must approve the list every three years. I coordinated with the city's real estate services coordinator, and we identified eight properties to be on this list. Five of the lots can be combined into a multifamily project, so we really have four development sites, and they're all vacant. The five-lot assemblage is about four tenths of an acre in North Greenwood area, there are two single-family lots also in the North Greenwood area, and we have 1.3-acre site in Lake Bellevue suitable for a multifamily project. I'll take questions.
Any questions for Mr. Lane? Anyone from the public to speak to item 8.1? Have a motion? Move to approve item 8.1.
Second.
Mr. Margolis?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 22-13, a resolution of the City of Clearwater, Florida, determining the city holds fee simple title in and to eight parcels of land lying and being situated within its corporate limits that are appropriate for use as affordable housing, as defined in Section 166.0451 Florida statutes, establishing an inventory listing of said parcels, providing an effective date.
I have a motion, a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. 8.2.
Approve the annexation initial future land use map designation residential urban and initial zoning atlas designation of low-medium-density residential district for 1272 Sadiva Circle North and past ordinances 9564-22, 9565-22, and 9566-22 on second reading.
Good evening, Gina Clayton, Planning and Development. City Council approved first reading of this annexation back in August of 2021. Second reading was delayed because they were constructing a home in the county. Since that time, the construction has been completed, but the owner has changed, so we need to do a second and a third reading with new ordinance numbers. Just to remind you the details, if you forgot, this property is in an enclave, it's surrounded on three sides, so it's eligible for annexation. The property will be designated residential urban on the future land use map and zone low-medium-density residential. We anticipate no impacts on city services, and it is consistent with the comprehensive plan or recommending approval.
Any questions for Ms. Clayton? Anyone from the public to speak to item 8.2? Mr. Margolis?
Ordinance number 9564-22, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, annexing certain real property located on north side of Sadiva Circle in approximately north, approximately 220 feet west of North Betty Lane, whose post office address is 1272 Sadiva Circle North, Clearwater, Florida, 33755, into the corporate limits of the city, and redefining the boundary lines of the city to include said addition, providing an effective date. Next up is 9565-22, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the city to designate the land use for certain real property located on the north side of Sadiva Circle North, approximately 220 feet west of North Betty Lane, whose post office address is 1272 Sadiva Circle North, Clearwater, Florida, 33755, upon annexation into the City of Clearwater as residential urban, RU, providing an effective date. And finally, we have ordinance number 9566-22, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, amending the zoning atlas of the city by zoning certain real property located on the north side of Sadiva Circle North, approximately 220 feet west of North Betty Lane, whose post office address is 1272 Sadiva Circle North, Clearwater, Florida, 33755, upon annexation into the City of Clearwater as low-medium-density residential, LMDR, providing an effective date.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve agenda item 8.2.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. 9.1. Yes?
Ordinance number 9540-22, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, annexing certain real property located on the south side of Audubon Street, approximately 300 feet south of Druid Road, whose post office address is 1827 Audubon Street, Clearwater, Florida, 33764, into the corporate limits of the city, and redefining the boundary lines of the city to include said addition, providing an effective date.
Anyone to speak to item 9.1? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve agenda item 9.1.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. 9.2, Mr. Margolis.
Ordinance number 9541-22, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the city to designate the land use for certain real property located on the south side of Audubon Street, approximately 300 feet south of Druid Road, whose post office address is 1827 Audubon Street, Clearwater, Florida, 33764, upon annexation into the City of Clearwater as residential low, RL, and water, providing an effective date.
Anyone from the public to speak to item 9.2? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve agenda item 9.2.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. 9.3.
An ordinance number 9542-22, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, amending the zoning atlas of the city by zoning certain real property located on the south side of Audubon Street, approximately 300 feet south of Druid Road, whose post office address is 1827 Audubon Street, Clearwater, Florida, 33764, upon annexation into the City of Clearwater as low-medium-density residential, LMDR, providing an effective date.
Anyone from the public to speak to item 9.3? Motion? Move to approve item 9.3.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. 9.4.
Ordinance number 9567-22, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, annexing certain unaddressed real property located on the southeast corner of Otten Street and Weston Drive, Clearwater, Florida, 33755, into the corporate limits of the city and redefining the boundary lines of the city to include said addition, providing an effective date.
Anyone from the public to speak to item 9.4? Motion?
Motion to approve agenda item 9.4.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. 9.5.
Ordinance number 9568-22, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the city to designate the land use for certain unaddressed real property located on the southeast corner of Otten Street and Weston Drive, Clearwater, Florida, 33755, upon annexation into the City of Clearwater as residential low, RL, providing an effective date.
Anyone from the public to speak to item 9.5? Seeing none, motion?
Motion to approve agenda item 9.5.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. 9.6.
Ordinance number 9569-22, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, amending the zoning atlas of the city by zoning certain unaddressed real property located on the southeast corner of Otten Street and Weston Drive, Clearwater, Florida, 33755, upon annexation into the City of Clearwater as low-medium-density residential, LMDR, providing an effective date.
Anyone from the public to speak to item 9.6? Have a motion?
Motion to approve agenda item 9.6.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. 9.7.
Ordinance number 9579-22, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, vacating the five-foot-wide platted utility easement located on lots 1, 2, and 3, Block 44, Mandalay Sub, according to the map or plat thereof, as recorded in Plat Book 14, page 32 through 35 of the public records of Pinellas County, Florida, providing an effective date.
Anyone from the public to speak to item 9.7? Motion? I move to approve item 9.7.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. 10.1.
Amend the city's fiscal year 2021-2022 operating and capital improvement budgets at mid-year and past ordinances 9589-22 and 9590-22 on first reading.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Kailene Castle, Budget Officer. This is the mid-year budget review for the fiscal year 2122 budget. I went over the report with you on Monday, and I'd be happy to answer any additional questions you have.
Any questions?
Move to approve agenda 10.1.
Second.
Anyone from the public to speak to this item? That's all right.
You looked at me, I just...
Okay. I am not going to be voting for this, primarily because of the City Hall item, and I've been pretty vocal about that, the city manager and I have talked about it, and I just think there's other solutions than spending 30-plus million dollars. I understand that there will be efficiencies from a new city hall, but that is the reason that I won't be voting for it. So, I have a motion and a second, no one from the public to speak to the item, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Nay. 4-1 with the mayor opposing. Item 10.2.
The ordinance is...
We're going to have to read the title.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
If I may. So, ordinance number 9589-22, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, amending the operating budget for the fiscal year ending September 30th of 2022 to reflect increases and decreases in revenues and expenditures for the general fund, special development fund, special program fund, gas fund, marine fund, and parking fund, as provided herein, providing an effective date. The second ordinance is 9590-22, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, amending the capital improvement budget for the fiscal year ending September 30th of 2022 to reflect an increase of $12,724,924, providing an effective date.
Motion is second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Nay. Passes 4-1 with my opposition. 10.2.
Supplement and amend Resolution 19-34 for the sale of not to exceed $30 million of City of Clearwater, Florida, non-advalorem revenue bond series 2022 Imagine Clearwater improvements, authorize the appropriate officials to execute same and adopt Resolution 22-14.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Jay Ravens, Finance Director. As presented at the work session on Monday, staff is requesting your approval of a supplemental resolution for the sale of not to exceed $30 million of non-advalorem revenue bonds for the Imagine Clearwater project. Council previously approved Resolution 19-34 in late 2019 and ordinance 935720 in early 2020 authorizing the sale of the bonds. This supplemental resolution amends the original authorizing resolution, adding the form of sale-related documents, including the summary and official notices of sale and the preliminary offering statement. The supplemental resolution also authorizes award of sale to the lowest conforming bidder per a competitive public sale, and authorizes execution and delivery of an official statement and disclosure agent agreement. Finally, the resolution authorizes certain city officials to execute documents on your behalf. Currently, we intend to sell the bonds in late June, with the closing scheduled for mid-July. On a related note, we did receive a rating on the new bonds today from Standard and Coors of AA+, which is one notch below the highest rating of AAA. Finally, we have a related document that I believe David's going to pass among you that requires the signature of each council member tonight, a certificate as to public meetings and no conflict of interest, that essentially certifies for the, the bondholders that all council discussions of this bond issuance have been in the sunshine. The city's bond counsel, Dwayne Draper, with Bryant, Miller, and Olive is present and available to answer any questions about this form or anything else related to the bond issuance. I'm also happy to answer any questions.
Well, the S&amp;P report was dynamite, read it this afternoon, so that's great to see. That is really a result of years of being fiscally responsible, so. Any questions for Mr. Ravens? Anyone from the public to speak to item 10.2? Mr. Margolis, you want to read the resolution?
Yes, sir. Resolution number 22-14, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Clearwater, Florida, supplementing and amending Resolution number 19-34, authorizing and approving the sale of not to exceed $30 million stated principal amount, City of Clearwater, Florida, non-advalorem revenue bonds, series 2022 Imagine Clearwater improvements, fixing certain details of said bonds, approving the forms of the summary notice of sale and official notice of sale with respect to such bonds, delegating to the city manager or finance director the authority to determine the principal amounts of such bonds to be issued and the bid date with respect to such bonds, to award the sale thereof to the lowest conforming bidder based on bids submitted at public sale, and to determine the terms of such sale, appointing the paying agent and registrar, approving the form and authorizing the execution and delivery of a disclosure dissemination agent agreement, approving the form and authorizing the distribution of a preliminary official statement, and authorizing the execution and delivery of an official statement pertaining to the bonds, authorizing certain officials of the city to execute any document or to take any actions required in connection with the issuance of said bonds, providing certain other matters relating to the series 2022 bonds, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and an effective date.
Do I have a motion?
Move to approve agenda item 10.2.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Ravens. 10.3.
Designate, designate a council member to serve as the city's official voting delegate at the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference, August 11th through 13th, 2022. Council members in the agenda pack, the Florida League of Cities is requesting each city to designate an official voting delegate for their annual business meeting, and if you have any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Call? I understand you're attending, and you'd like to represent us?
Yeah, I plan to attend.
Okay, everyone comfortable with that?
Yep.
A motion of that effect?
A motion to approve...
No, you shouldn't do it.
Oh, that's right. I'll do it.
I, I move that we designate council member, or vice mayor Beckman, to serve as the city official voting delegate.
Second.
Anyone to speak to this item? Have a motion, a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. 10.4.
Approve a preferred development concept and team submitted for the former City Hall site and the former Harborview site and direct staff to begin negotiations to finalize a development agreement.
I can see that, just a moment, we have, I think, two of the, two of the organizations that are interested. Ms. Thompson, do you have anything to add at this time?
I do not.
Any questions from council before I open it up to the public? So, what I plan to do is open it up to the public, and then if there are any questions that arise out of that, we have two of the interested parties here, we can ask them questions, then we'll go on to discussion, and ultimately, also the staff's recommendation, and then a vote. Any questions? All right. Now you can come up. Anyone to speak to item 10.4? We ask you to state your name for the record, and we ask you to keep your comments to three minutes.
My name is Christina Carley, and I have been a resident of Clearwater, Florida for my entire life. I went to North Ward Elementary School, as did my older sister and my mother. You may remember me being in front of you, asked years ago. I, you know, am concerned about Clearwater, and I always want our green spaces to remain green. I don't think a lot of development in the Bluff Area is necessary to make the downtown area more vibrant. I think it's already becoming more vibrant without that sale of that land. If the land needs to have something done to it, I prefer a lease arrangement where the city would have some control over what happens to it, rather than a sale, and that's my position.
Thank you, Ms. Carley. Is that it? I didn't think so.
I thought she would call, I wasn't sure.
No, you can come on up.
I am here, hello, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Monica Agami, I'm a seven-year resident of downtown Clearwater. I lived and worked in New York City for over 10 years in the arts and music and dance world. I was thrilled when I heard our mayor and our city manager talk about bringing arts and music to our downtown and waterfront area. I really just have one question for you all. So, let's move into 2023, it's August, and it's a beautiful day in downtown Clearwater, and we have a 600-unit apartment complex with approximately 12,000 cars, a sold-out concert date of 4,000 guests, a hotel with a sold-out occupancy, park visitors, retail shoppers, restaurant guests, all the employees to sustain all this activity, and beach traffic up and down Osceola. So, can you please walk me through the infrastructure plans, specifically traffic patterns and parking for this scenario?
We're not to that point yet. Part of the actual development agreement and all of the architectural designs, our traffic engineers, all of that will be addressed in the future.
So, this has just been my concern as a resident of our wonderful town of Clearwater. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't be shy.
Hi, my name is Arlene Olson Kazaka, and I live at Water's Edge. I have a concern, this might not even be relevant here, but about the traffic going, the buses going into the park that is a green space, it should be a green space, but my problem is that there are going to be buses, and if they're gasoline or diesel-fueled, we are going to get fumes, and I don't think that makes it a green space. Can we... we are going to get fumes, and I don't think that makes it a green space. Can we have the buses that come down there and turn around and park in front of our building be electric? That's my point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready?
Mayor, Council, City Attorney, and Staff, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. No doubt, people that know me know that I have an absolute-
State your name, Mr. Lloyd, for the record.
David Lloyd. No doubt, people that know me know that I have an absolute passion for helping Clearwater be the best Clearwater can be. I see three proposals here tonight, GSP, Gotham, and Elevate. Tonight, I feel the two best choices are between Gotham and Elevate. I have friends on both sides. I have friends on council. I respect them all. My problem tonight is with the new city manager and staff who created this RFP process. Staff, in my opinion, failed this process the first time and rushed to fix this RFP process a second time. The problem started with the rush. This process needed to be flawless the second time, and it obviously was not. For this, I absolutely blame Jennings for not working closer to oversee staff. A normal ninety-day process was cut to thirty days. Teams had fifteen minutes to present why. In the Tampa Bay Times, Jennings calls this a once-in-a-generation decision. Don't you think he would be more specific with getting the process right? There was not even a scoring process for this once-in-a-generation decision. Mayor Hibbard had to create one. Thank you. The problem is, a scoring process was created after the submissions. This gives the illusion of an unfair process. It gives the illusion of bias from the dais for no reason. Also, two teams had asks, GSP and Elevate. Gotham had no ask in their proposal, yet they do have a huge ask for the elevated Bluff Walk. They're asking the city to pay for this. Would this not be a disqualification point? Also, the two towers on the City Hall site could be a problem. Phase construction process could extend the project completion to almost double. Let's look at bias, not bias, friends, not friends, vested interests, non-vested interests, inclusion versus exclusivity, inclusion versus non-inclusion. I feel we need to consider inclusion, inclusion of the entire city of Clearwater, what is best for the city as well as for the citizens. The Elevate proposal was very thoughtful to what the Imagine Clearwater vision would be. The rendering for the Harborview site combined with the proper theming to include Jazz Holiday is exactly what so many had envisioned. It was inclusive, allowing all of Clearwater to enjoy this experience, which is ingrained on this bluff. In my opinion, I feel the best proposal and only proposal that will pass this referendum is the Elevate proposal. However, with the rush to final drop-dead deadline of July sixth, more importantly, with the improper process created by the city, perhaps the city should be negotiating with both Gotham and Elevate to make sure they cover all basis points for a passable referendum. I ask you all tonight to remember where this process started. It seems a decade ago, almost eight years. Citizens came out, they voted, do what's right for the city. This rushed decision should not have been rushed, but at least the process could have been much more professional. Thank you.
Hello.
Good evening.
Felix Charlotte. I'm a resident of Water's Edge, and by nature, actually, an apartment developer, not in Clearwater, in some other states, and just wanted really to voice a concern. I've seen several proposals, you know, one of them is a twin tower with six-hundred units. From what I understand, there are six-hundred parking spots, ratio of one to one. Normally, when we design apartments, I know we design it to one-point-seven, and one-point-seven gets full. One-point-five, it's most other jurisdiction is not allowed because people have no place to park, and, you know, we start looking around, we park on the streets, we'll occupy some other spaces, and it would be a really big concern. I was a little bit surprised that the whole RFP process was thirty days and fifteen minutes to discuss it. From what I've seen in many other states and jurisdictions, it's a lot more involved process, and definitely what we are changing or what we proposing to change, it's generational change for the Clearwater. It's from what used to be kind of a very quiet downtown, you know, we want to be vibrant, which definitely support my idea. I think it would be great, but not to a scale of two twin towers with six-hundred units and no parking. You know, that's a disaster. You know, it's a Manhattan and looking for a parking spot. And I did see the proposal Elevate, which was brought and they did a presentation at Water's Edge, which I'm accustomed to, talk to the neighbors, present, listen to their ideas, and that made more sense to me from my experience as an apartment developer, and just wanted to really, you know, you to not take the decision lightly because it is a change for the next hundred years, how Clearwater is going to develop and how it affects us, you know, being at Water's Edge. Me specifically, I have a unit that's going to face potentially with a construction for the next five, six years. Twin Tower, it's, you know, one construction after another. It's, you know, definitely would not support that. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Sharon Fecetti. I am the author of The Broken Road to Mental Health in Life and in Business. I'm the founder of Thirteenth Avenue Media, and I am the Doctor Whisperer. I have an office here in Clearwater at The Ring. I'm an OG. I was one of the first ones to sign on the lease. I live about eight minutes away. Having seen what the partners of Smart City Group have created with their healthy and eco-friendly workspace environment, I am confident that they would push the envelope even further on both of the development sites. The spaces we live, visit, and operate affect us so many ways, and our mental health and well-being must be fully considered. I heard one of Elevate's team members mention that music therapy is a part of their development. I looked into music therapy, and the definition goes as follows. Music therapy is an evidence-based treatment that helps with a variety of disorders, including cardiac conditions, depression, autism, substance abuse, and Alzheimer's disease, which my father was diagnosed with in January of this year. It can help with memory, lower blood pressure, improve coping, reduce stress, improve self-esteem, and more. That's remarkable. So as a sober woman of twenty-seven years and former depression sufferer, the council should consider this as being something that is different from any other hotel or venue. I understand that these buildings must be built to lead standards. All groups seem to have clearly stated that Elevate and Gotham both seem to have very good components of sustainability. However, I found that when questioned, Elevate was able to readily state what green initiatives and features they had, from solar on the roof of the hotel to the smart flower that will link to green print. Goodness, that will even make the staff of both developments carbon-neutral. So it's a pity that this was overlooked. I moved to Tampa Bay eighteen years ago from New York. I'm used to skyscrapers. I loved the skyline. I didn't love what happened on nine eleven. I moved here because I had seasonal affective disorder. I needed to see the water. I wanted to be around places where I could ride my bicycle. It seems no one has asked the right questions or honed in and focused on the meaningful and purposeful incorporations of Elevate. The group was grilled about their numbers and finance. At least, they were transparent about that, but nothing was asked about the Jazz Walk, the interactive arches, the guitar or cello cascading pool. Time is running out. The people they will attract, the children they would have been inspired, but at the end of the day, now we have a mental health crisis on our hands, and our community developers need to consider the impact of our overall health and wellness, our mental health and our mental wellness, which starts right here in our community and green spaces, and I'm sorry to say, even as a New Yorker, I don't want to see too many skyscrapers. Thank you for your time.
Morning, Mayor Hibbard. Good morning. Good afternoon, Mayor Hibbard, council members. Bob Buckhorn, one oh one East Kennedy Boulevard, Shoemaker, Luke McKendrick, and Shoemaker Advisors on behalf of the Elevate Project. It is good to see you.
Nice to see you, Mayor.
Thank you for having me. I didn't think I would ever step foot in chambers again for any reason. I'm getting PTSD at the, by being here, but I appreciate what you guys are doing in this discussion that you're having. This is an important project for this community, and we on the Tampa side have always looked at Clearwater and St. Petersburg as our equal partners. It is a three-legged stool. It is a Bay Area that has become one of the most exciting places in America, and it's Clearwater's time. This project that you are undertaking and the investment that you have made as a government will change the game as you know it in this city. It is a moment that you don't want to miss, but I also think it is a process that needs to withstand public scrutiny. I think it is a decision that you make that unlike in my jurisdiction, the public has to support by referendum. I have known Ken Staltenberg for twenty-five years. Ken, in the Channel Side, was one of the original developers. He was a pioneer. He believed in Channel Side before anybody else did, and as a mayor, he was very easy to work with. He did what he said he was going to do. He produced a product that all of you have seen, and you have seen the impact in Channel Side. He and I worked together for five years to get a Publix in downtown Tampa. I was famously quoted in the newspaper saying, "I would trade my firstborn daughter to get a Publix in downtown Tampa." My youngest daughter immediately called her older sister and said, "See, Daddy loves me more than you. He just traded you for a grocery store." Ken does what he says he's going to do. You know Daniels, one of the largest property owners in Clearwater, but I would suggest to you that you think about a couple of things as you move through this process. One, I think the construction timetable is important. The question is, do you want a three-year project, or do you want a five- or six-year construction site by virtue of two towers having to be constructed, with tower cranes having to do three hundred and sixty degrees over the amenity deck of the first tower? Even when it is leased, you still will not have construction completed on the second tower for eighteen to twenty-four months. Two, in terms of the process, as mayor, if staff gave me a recommendation, they documented it, they scored it, they preserved it for posterity and the public record, it is important as you move forward. And third, and lastly, as mayor, and I did a lot of these deals, I think it's reflected in what City of Tampa looks like now. If a proposal had come to me without any information, without any ask, without any expectation, without any discussion about what the city participation would be, it never would have seen my desk. It never would have seen my desk.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
I mean, how do you follow that? I'm Chris Yarn. I'm one of the original founders of Big Storm Brewing Company, no longer a shareholder. I do want to know if Mayor Buckhorn is going to be wearing a UCF jersey and raising a flag again this year. I hope to see it. I'm here today about this, and I guess I really just have one question for all the council members and mayors. So raise your hand if you've ever had a personal or city construction project not completed on time. Raise your hand if you've, if you don't, you ever had a roofer go over three or four days, or a flooring contractor. Could you raise your hand if you've ever had a construction project not completed on time?
Of course, we all have.
Okay, so this is common knowledge by everyone here, right? So it's Florida, okay? With supply chain issues we've seen today, I'm here in support of the Elevate Clearwater Plan, and I think every single one of you up there had, is here to elevate Clearwater. And I just see it, I'm a kid that grew up here singing the main stage here at Coachman Park Jazz Festival every year. My childhood friends come back and are the headliners, Eric Darius. I love this city, and I agree with Mayor Buckhorn. I'd like to see it. I'd like to come here for date nights instead of going to Clearwater Beach or going to, you know, Dunedin or St. Pete where my wife wants to go. And I think you've got a real opportunity here, but I just, I can't see where you've got a timeline with two towers going up. We all know construction projects don't complete on time. You got a five-year timeline on one proposal, a two-year timeline on the other. I'd still add at least a year, three, four years to all of those, but I just, it doesn't make any sense to me why we'd be entertaining the Gotham proposal at this point, and I would like to see us actually continue with the vision of elevating Clearwater. I do have two other letters here. I'm probably only going to have time to read one, but my opinion on this is this is, some of your proposals are big city, big building, no parking nonsense, and I think they need to not be considered. Please accept this letter, this is from Aboretta Stevens. Please accept this letter as support of the proposed City Hall site mixed-use development for Harborview by Elevate Clearwater. After viewing RFP options set before the council, we firmly believe that Elevate Clearwater's revitalization plan for both the city and Harborview sites is in the best interests of the city. The plan represented by Gotham is loose with phase construction approach that would take in excess of five years, coupled with vague details on logistics and financial figures. I know you mentioned that you're not at that phase yet, but I think it's pretty clear, you know, echoing Buckhorn's comments, want to go with the guy that's dealt with Channel Side. Also, something I noticed in the St. Pete Times article, we've already awarded a partnered firm here eighty-four million dollars, Stan Tech, or a portion of that contract to revitalize Coachman Park, so I would like to potentially see some other companies involved in this process. I'll just go ahead and finish Aboretta's note here. I've got ten seconds. Essentially, she's saying the same thing that you guys are hearing from everybody else. No parking, no plan, big building, big city, no parking nonsense. Don't vote for them. Thank you.
Who can I turn these letters into?
Mayor, Council?
Good evening. My name is J.D. White. I'm here to read a statement from Mayor Rick Christman. He unfortunately tested positive for COVID yesterday, and so couldn't be here. I don't typically read my remarks, but tonight I would, I think just to get the accuracy, I will. So it goes as follows. For eight years, I was mayor of this city of St. Petersburg, so why am I here today to speak about a project in Clearwater? My answer is twofold. I believe a thriving Clearwater helps create a thriving region, just like St. Pete benefits from a thriving Tampa, Tampa and St. Pete benefit from a thriving Clearwater. Second, in this new chapter of my life at Shoemaker, I am, I am able to help and advocate for people and issues I believe in. So I've known Daniels for several years. I like him. I believe in him. In fact, I tried to convince him to leave Clearwater and come to St. Pete, but he refused. He loves the city, and he has demonstrated that love and commitment through his volunteer work he's done by investing in the community. He does what he says, and he will do it this time. He knows Clearwater can become and wants to help, help it reach its potential. Now, you've had three strong proposals from three development teams, but I believe, as Rick Christman, that only one development team addressed your five major project goals and did so with detailed information that fully answered your questions at City Council Workshop. That development team is Elevate. From the jazz-themed hotel on Harborview site to the single-tower residential and retail on the Old City Hall site, Elevate fully fulfilled your mission you defined in the RFP and will create an outstanding views from the hotel and residential buildings. We will jumpstart the redevelopment downtown, and the important issue, they will do it in three years instead of six years. Most importantly, they can get the project done in one phase. You won't have to worry about whether the other building is built, the other tower is built. Your RFP timeline also importantly calls for a tenant agreement by July sixth and a referendum finalized by July twenty-first, with all of the outstanding questions by the other two bidders, questions about their commitment to sustainability, solar, questions about EV charging stations, questions about the cost and who will pay for underground parking and streetscaping. You don't have months to figure this out. You've got to have the answers to your questions, and you need certainty. Only one group, Elevate, gave you that certainty and will jumpstart the future of Clearwater's downtown in three years. Elevate will harness the support from residents and the business community that we've heard and successfully navigate the referendum process. I encourage you to select Elevate. Thank you for your time. Thanks, Mayor.
Good evening, Council. My name is Daniel Villegas. I'm a Pinellas County resident for over fifteen years. I'm here to speak in regards today, in regards to the question about, around the Gotham lack of financials, okay? As a financial advisor with over a decade of experience, I see, it seems like the numbers are very vague and do not add up, okay? Based on the information that was provided in the submission, my financial assumptions will be as follows. On the City Hall site, they stated their total development cost on City Hall will be approximately two hundred and ten million dollars. $210 million. That is going to be absolutely impossible, in my opinion, but I will love everyone's opinion, okay? Let's start with the 600 underground parking spots at $440,000 apiece, that equals a $24 million project. 600 Class A units, let's say that they can magically build this at $350,000 per unit, that's another $210 million alone, okay? So obviously, again, the math does not add up. On the retail side, 25,000 square feet, at $250 a square foot between hard costs and DI, that's another $6.25 million. I don't have the figures for what they propose in regards to the bridge, what the bridge will cost, but let's estimate $3 million. With these figures alone, we're over $240 million. Again, in judging by the timeframe that they're trying, plan to build this over five years, nobody's exempt from inflation. We all know what that's going to happen with the cost of material and the shores that we currently living on. On the Harborview site, 150 keys at $375,000 each is a $56 million, $250,000. 150 underground parking spots at $40,000 apiece, another $6 million. Adding soft costs, the retail component, and a 1,000-person conference center, and the Berry Garden, plus insane landscaping, you can easily add another $20 million. Looking at total costs of approximately $82 million, $250,000, okay? Without proposing any incentive and hard figures, how did this proposal safeguarded costs are now passed to the citizens of Clearwater? Thank you.
My name is Taylor Precourt. I am born and raised in Clearwater, Florida. My proms and homecomings were at the Harborview Center, so very familiar with the site we're in discussion today. I'm a business strategist as a living, and the devil is in the detail, always. I like to take into consideration all sides, and I pride myself on seeking to understand, and that is genuinely why I'm here today. I am in favor of Elevate Clearwater. Given the timeframe, my entire career is in construction, from masonry, I can tell you a lot about CMU, from electrical to technology, implementation, luxury goods, designs, and fabrication. This is a topic that I'm very well-versed in. When you interview somebody, and I am, I'm like going off a little bit, but when you interview somebody, you know when you have a good candidate, you feel it in your guts. I've read through these proposals. I have a gut feeling. And aside from the gut, you have fact. Why does Clearwater not deserve the time being now for development? I don't think anybody could say that we want construction downtown for six years. Ken has done a fantastic job when it comes to the Channel Side District. You have the mayors in front of you of Tampa and St. Petersburg saying, "Hey, we have to stick up for Clearwater." This is a partnership. Gotham has beautiful design, no doubt, as does their venture with the Denunzio Group. Nobody is, is saying, to Dave's point, that we're against, we are just for, in this moment, Elevate Clearwater for this particular development, this site. They have a stake in Clearwater. And, and, and Ms. Beckman, we have heard from you talk about keep keen green. How is this vote not so obvious for you on the sustainability fronts? It's so bizarre to me, I can't understand it. I want to, and I can't. Additionally, it has been said on record that, look, maybe Gotham could take some of Elevate Clearwater's design sites. I am sorry and excuse me, but that is intellectual property that is against every one of your ethics, I would assume, as you are a person in power. Everyone has submitted their RFP. There is clearly a winner here. And lastly, and absolutely foremost, the citizens of Clearwater. Look at this empty room. Look at it. That is such a disgrace. Where are the citizens? I am talking about this room should be packed. Clearwater is big, and it's not. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Thank you. My name is Mark Chorus. I'm the president of Experiential Ventures. We're the group working with Elevate to bring the Music Hotel to town. We're a big believer in Clearwater. As a matter of fact, we have contracted to put our corporate offices here in Clearwater. It's one of the few locations in the United States that we see applicable for all of our brands. Our brands include Sports Illustrated Resorts, it includes Wired Hotels, the Harmony 12 Hotel chain, and Emmett, which is Emmett Smith's Steakhouse, the infamous Dallas Cowboys linebacker. We see opportunities in the community to bring all of our properties to Clearwater, not just part of the Elevate Harborside event. We believe that our hotel becomes more than just a place for heads and beds. Harmony is a combination of music, it's a combination of relaxation, it's a combination of health and wellness, and we have dialed all that into our formula. We believe that a hotel or a property that can present all those things enables the community to enjoy that location, not just as a place to vacation, but as a community center. We have the programming to do that. We have the support of Authentic Brands Group, who owns Sports Illustrated. We have the support from Conde Nast, who owns Wired. We have the support of major financial backers. Our wanting to be here is because we believe in this community, and we believe that the hotel concept that we're bringing to Clearwater is so right for this community, not just a place for tourists to go. We welcome the opportunity to be part of this, and we fully believe that the Elevate Group has thought this through from top to bottom and has the ability to make something exceptional here in Clearwater. I think personally that this is one of those opportunities, that it's one of those projects becomes a category of one. There's nothing else that can replicate what Elevate has proposed to do here in Clearwater, and the community is so right to execute that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Emily Jo Keller. As a full-time student and young professional, my small business contributes tax dollars to hopefully see consistent improvements in our city. We all want immersive, inclusive, interactive, and educational environments, which I believe Elevate Clearwater provides. Please know these are crucial factors for myself and other youth. I love the fact that they are providing a culinary incubator, which involves a rotational culinary experience for everyone to enjoy. Families have the ability to try all varieties of cuisine from startup businesses. I cannot believe that no one has focused on the significant garden artwork and placemaking, which is critical for connecting our park to the rest of the downtown and increasing the vibrancy that everybody keeps talking about. As a photographer, I am always looking for beautiful moments to capture, and as a musician who plays four instruments, I recognize the need for exposure and opportunities, and I love the fact that they have partnered with the Clearwater Jazz Holiday to give youth a stage to perform. On another note, my brother has autism spectrum disorder. People that have these certain kinds of disorders need to be included in their environment and have access to innovative and specially-designed sensory environments. All the thoughts around creating an enabled environment and doing it with nature, technology, and our community at the forefront is truly inspiring. Elevate says cross-cultural and multi-generational, and as a young person, that's stuck with me, because this is for the current generation and for our future. Thank you for my time.
My name is Stuart Scott. My grandparents moved here in the 30s. My mom went to, and my aunts and uncles went to Northward Clearwater High School. We've been here ever since. I'm here to read a statement by Dr. Alan Weiss. I'm sure you guys know him. I would just, so these are the words of Dr. Weiss. "I would just like to commend Elevate Clearwater for all the references to music and jazz in the development of the hotel. It is beyond beautiful and thoughtful." The young lady who spoke about imagining what it would be like to be there and the experiences that we have was so powerful. I could imagine the artists and the musicians and the jazz holiday concerts at the hotel. Just imagine walking down Osceola, that whole strip filled with imprints of the artists that would grace your stage. That's unique. It's different. It's Instagrammable. It's iconic. Come on, Council. You know, watching this all unfold, I thought of Louis Armstrong's quote, "There is two kinds of music, the good and the bad. I play to the good." I really hope you guys do not rush this process as much as it seems you have. I hope you pay attention to Elevate and what they have proposed. Remove your bias and focus on the community that you all serve. Thank you.
This is pretty exciting. My name is Eleanor Lyda, and I just want to say that a lot of people that haven't lived here for a long time don't know really how special Coachman Park is or the Bluff. I mean, the Bluff is so special, and I am so very glad that you all are really being really picky about it, because so many people here that are the old folks that lived here for so long and went to school here feel that way. I do want to say that I was here a couple of years ago, and you had two people presenting what they wanted to put on the Bluff, and I didn't know too much about Clearwater then, so I just sat there and thought, oh, man, this doesn't look like Clearwater, you know, but I didn't want to get up and say anything. And then you discarded that, and then I was so glad that now you put out this second RFP, and we have three people that have bid. I came to the work session and listened to everything. I know about the beautiful job Daniels Group did on the ring. That totally blew me away, the detail that went into it. So I strongly recommend that group to do the Bluff. I think you'll be very happy. He's, they do details beautifully, and I just really feel the people of Clearwater would see how beautiful it will be, and I vote for him. Thank you.
Tricia McDermott recently returned Floridian via New York City. Thank you for hearing me out. I'm going to just read a portion of this letter that I wrote. "Please accept my support for the proposed City Hall mixed-use development site in Harborview Experiential Hotel by Elevate Clearwater. I'm excited to see the level of activity and development coming to the community as part of the overall revitalization plans. As a new professional cultural organization working to make our permanent home in downtown, I can see the benefit of the development and how it will cement the community as a unique local location to live, work, and play for local residents, visitors from the surrounding areas, out of state, and beyond. I was asked as an interested party to review the plans provided by the developers. While I see that both have merit, Gotham and Elevate, the plans put forth by Elevate for both City Hall and Harborview sites seem to me to be in the best interest of the city. With sustainability at the forefront, excuse me, Elevate's Clearwater's proposal focuses on creating connections among the community, taking into account the diversity of age and economic interests here. Successful urban designers understand that diversity is key to overall long-term health of any new revitalization project. With sustainability at the forefront of their design, Elevate Clearwater plans look beyond the immediate to the long-term health of the community that will live within it. With their use of sustainable resources, downtown Clearwater stands to benefit in many ways, including from the reduced air pollution and its related issues. Having spent time in Shanghai, China, where I had to wear a mask on high pollution days, and living and working in New York City for many years, I can attest to the need to concern ourselves with clean air and sustainable use of resources. This will not only help in the immediate building process, but will help create a better future for all residents and visitors. Additionally, Elevate Clearwater's plan to complete their proposed, their proposed plans within two years will kickstart a long-stalled development that's desperately needed and too long in coming. Finally, it seems that their local connections in view to hold on and build on the homeground flavor and brand that already exists in Clearwater will help keep Clearwater's unique character and history alive. That's inevitably why people go anywhere, its character and its special nature. I hope that the City Council will seriously consider the Elevate Clearwater submission, which favors a two-year timeframe, a sustainable build, innovative detail, and is backed by greater Tampa Bay resources with design that elevates Clearwater's local flavor and brand. I look forward to living, working, and producing theater for a long time to come for the residents and guests who will come to enjoy themselves in our revitalized downtown Clearwater."
Any other public comment?
I'm Jennifer Heathcock. How are you guys doing tonight? I just got one question. I'm not really too like up on like politics and what goes on in the city. I do know what I have to speak on is like the homeless. So like, my question is, is where do the homeless and the low-income people and the people that are starting to lose their homes every day and become homeless, like where do they fit out when it comes to the Elevate? Because if I'm not mistaken, at two of the ARPA meetings, like, one of the votes were for moving away from touristy stuff and focusing more on citizens, so I'm just curious about that. Like, the homeless is only getting worse, so, and y'all have already acknowledged that there needs to be some kind of solution to it, so.
We're going to deal with homeless, but we're not going to deal with them on the Bluff.
No, again, like I said, I'm not exactly sure, but I just want to make sure my voice gets heard, so.
I understand.
Thank you.
My name's David Lillisand. I live in Water's Edge. There is another view in Water's Edge to this proposal. I live, I work, and I play in downtown. I created a law firm on Court Street. We're doing very, very well. I walk to work, I walk home, I walk up and down Cleveland Street. I want the area to do well. I've been involved in Imagine Clearwater since 2016. I went to every single one of the seven planning meetings that had over 100 people from the citizenry participating in creating Imagine Clearwater. I think we did a pretty good job. We have an opportunity, I think, to go one step further, and this is a one-off chance. The decision you make today is going to really affect whether downtown Clearwater is going to be a viable place on its own in the future. So this is critically important. Being a lawyer, I did my homework this weekend when the reports came out. I spent six to seven hours on my own reading through all three reports. Unlike many of my Water's Edge residents who attended a meeting Tuesday night, they didn't even watch your work session where the presentations were made. They heard only one side of the whole story. They didn't get any valuation between the proposals. So I have not been contacted by any one of the developers to speak for them. I have no financial interest in this decision at all. I do have an interest, living and working in downtown Clearwater, that we make downtown Clearwater work, and it's going to work when we get a mass of people living in that area. And to me, there's going to be one answer for that, okay? I'm also a very strong supporter of affordable housing. I've received the Florida Bar President's Award for being the attorney that gave most more pro bono services to anybody else in our community. pro bono services to anybody else in our community. I have a long history of working in those activities. There is one project that I think addresses that need. So I look at the three submissions, but one stands out as aligned with my issues, both for downtown Clearwater and for my lifetime career in working for persons. And that proposal is by Gotham and Denuzio, who is also a local person, who has built successful projects on Clearwater Beach and other places. It adds 600 residents to downtown, not 388. I don't care if it takes six years to get to 600. What I care about is that we use the whole area of City Hall to maximize at 388. Does not make sense to me. It also includes a proposal to include 10% of the housing, or 60 units, as affordable housing units. That's why I support this proposal.
Hello. My name is Natalia Harrison. I'm the owner of Salt Sicilian Fusion Restaurant. I'm waiting for the Elevate project for the two simple reasons. They are very involved in downtown, in the city of Clearwater, and I cannot wait for that project to become alive because I want more people in my restaurant. I am going to my restaurant, my business, every day, and I want this, and I believe this is project going to benefit all the business owners. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city manager, and staff. My name is Festus Paul Benney. I'm on the Downtown Development Board, but today I'm here as a private citizen. First of all, I want to thank you guys for putting this RFP together. I really appreciate it. It's been a long time coming. I'm here to support Elevate Clearwater and the Smart City Group. This is because the development they've proposed today shows a deep understanding of downtown Clearwater. From their music-themed hotel to jazz music Walk of Fame, this group aims to create a unique identity for Clearwater. We are not St. Pete, we are not Tampa, we are Clearwater. So let's create an identity. Over the years, I stood in front of the council, I've been in other meetings, and I've raised the issue of parking downtown. The Gotham Group has proposed 600 apartment units and 600 parking spaces. That's one parking space per unit. While the average American family has about two cars. That might work in New York, but we all know that's not going to work in downtown Clearwater. It do only add to the problem of the parking we've had already and we face in downtown. Once again, we are not St. Pete, we are not Tampa, and we're definitely not New York. I don't fault the Gotham Group for this. It's simply a lack of understanding of the issues we face downtown. I am from Water's Edge, and I did watch the video, I did watch the work session, but everyone talks about live, work, and play, but it takes blood, sweat, and tears to achieve this. And that's what Elevate Clearwater and the Smart City Group has put in this community for years. Let's honor and respect that. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Mike Reeves. I'm reading in behalf of Grant Wood. Dear Mayor Hibbert and council members, please forgive my inability to be here in person. Although I have not been in various economic development activities in downtown Clearwater as of late, my personal commitment remains. My involvement in downtown Clearwater begins 15 years ago, working on the development team of the Water's Edge condo community. At the time, I did not live in Clearwater, nor did I anticipate living in Clearwater or Clearwater ever becoming my permanent home. During my tenure with the Water's Edge project, I was fortunate to meet numerous community leaders dedicated to improving the standards of living and lifestyle for everyone in the city. This has inspired me to settle in Clearwater, where my wife and three children call home now. During my involvement with the Clearwater Downtown Partnership, we engaged in numerous initiatives, the most important of which was Imagine Clearwater. I was honored to be selected to sit on the Imagine Clearwater Stakeholder Committee in 2016, and I am genuinely thrilled to see it finally come to life and looking forward to bringing my family to downtown waterfront in the future. A critical component to the success of Imagine Clearwater has always revolved around the development of the Bluff as a defining edge to the parking tree into downtown. Ensuring synergy that connects the waterfront to the border broader downtown community is essential, and your forthcoming selection of the development group to spearhead the Bluff revitalization effort is paramount. Upon my personal review, it seems two of the proposals meet this expectation. Downtown Clearwater is unique in many ways, but from a commercial real estate development standpoint, downtown Clearwater has an uncommon risk profile. I have had direct experience with performing on a project from afar and can attest without an intimate local presence. Understanding and navigating those dynamics is very challenging. One of the proposals presented to you has assembled a team spearheaded by professionals that have extensive experience and intimate awareness of how to navigate these uncommon localized risks. It's for that reason I hope you consider selecting Elevate Clearwater's proposal. As a disclosure, I offer to you that I do not have any financial interest in this project or with any of the development of the team partner members. Thank you for your time. I've been on Daniels &amp; M for 20 years. I've been at the Ring recently to celebrate their three-year anniversary, and if you haven't been there to see what they've done and the amount of work and issues.
Your time's up.
Sorry. Well, thank you guys for sharing.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. My name is Hushkavahi. I'm with Northside Engineering. My office has been in Clearwater for 43 years now, since 1979, when I moved here. I've enjoyed this town. I was here when Gulf to Bay was a two-lane road, US-19 was really not developed. So I have a bit of a history in here, and I love this town. I've never wavered from thinking of going somewhere else. Wherever I go, I always want to come back and just home. So in my opinion, it's time to elevate Clearwater. It's been long overdue. We really, really do need to elevate it, but we need to elevate it moderately, sensibly, to scale, not too big, not too small. I understand that this development needs to be more like a destination, not necessarily bringing a whole bunch of traffic and residents and major impact to downtown. Really, over scale and over development could damage this town. I am afraid that 10 years from now, 20 years from now, this will not necessarily be the vision that you may be thinking if otherwise you use the other team.
You are on one of the teams, though, are you?
I am, yes. Yes, I just wanted to, I mean, there's no reason for me to be on any team other than I believe in it. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Good afternoon, Mayor. City Council, I'm Dimitrios Yanakopoulos. I'm a Water's Edge resident, but I've been asked to read a letter on behalf of Dr. Alan Weiss, who's the Chief Medical Information Officer and Vice President of Bay Care Hospital. And he says, "To whom this may concern, please accept this letter as our support of the proposed City Hall mixed-use development in Harborview Site by Elevate Clearwater. After reviewing all RFP options set before the council, I feel passionately about the timeline that Elevate Clearwater, and specifically Mr. Stoltenberg, said they would be able to uphold. A timeline of two and a half years versus a six years to complete development is clearly favored by its citizens. Elevate Clearwater has proven their team is capable of setting these timelines with integrity through their CVs and examples of many successful projects. I would have expected the council to place greater emphasis on the timeline, leaning into a straightforward approach over a phased approach. Elevate Clearwater has made it clear they are willing to negotiate their incentive asks if that was the main issue the council had. You have a group that was upfront and transparent, yet it seems that was not valued. Going back to the experience, I looked briefly at those proposals. Elevate detailed all their players, which I think, again, is a great thing. These overqualified people have literally been a part of building the very places we all consider to be anchors of this Clearwater community. What is driving you to ignore these certain gaps in other proposals baffles me. If you care about who is truly rooted in this area and who has focused on growing this community and its neighboring cities, the choice could not be more obvious. Coupling experience, development timeline, and Elevate Clearwater's design that focuses on sustainability and wellness, I entrust the council will vote in favor of Elevate Clearwater's RFP. Sincerely, Dr. Alan Weiss."
Anyone else? I'm going to close public comment if people don't come up, so.
My name is Daniel Sikayev. Mayor, council members, staff. It's been a long time coming. We've worked on this over two years. And today, it's not about winning your vote of confidence, it's about winning the referendum. It will require citizen support. I think you could see today that we brought the crowd. Without it, this will not pass. I haven't seen much support for the Gotham's team. You've been asked to review three complex RFP proposals in a very short period of time. We were given 15 minutes to explain $300 million worth of projects. I've heard and I've seen the presentation. There's a lot of questions, a lot of confusion in terms of numbers, in terms of concepts. It's impossible to explain $300 million project in 15 minutes. Impossible. I asked that you look at the proposals from a different view. I want you to take a look at it. What will truly transform the downtown Clearwater? What are the concepts that you think will shape the future of downtown Clearwater? Ask any business in downtown Clearwater, do they prefer seeing downtown Clearwater come to life in six years or in three years? Imagine putting money in downtown and ask that question. Do you truly believe the answer will be six years or three? If you're a resident in downtown Clearwater, do you prefer waking up to construction sounds for six years or for three years? I think the answer is very clear. 600 units, 600 parkings. How big are those units? How come their budget is the same as 388 units? Are these small little boxes? Are these studios? Are we trying to attract singles? Or are we trying to attract families to downtown Clearwater? Too many questions, no answers. What's the ask? What's the ask from the team? That's part of the package. You can't compare IRR apple to apple unless you see all the numbers inside. Once you put the ask inside, obviously, the IRR is going to drop or actually go up, so, right? So, thank you so much.
Anyone else?
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. Katie Cole with the Law Firm of Hillward Henderson, and I do represent the Gotham team. So thank you for this afternoon for having us.
Before you start, just to confirm, individuals, Kenneth, Kate, Frank, Sean, Jordan, and Matt.
That is the Gotham Denuzio team. So this evening, I am here representing the Bluffs team. Matt Pickett and Dustin Denuzio with Gotham and Denuzio Group, who are here tonight, our architects, Stan Tech, and Sean with Reel, who is our sustainability consultant. Over the past month, this team has worked tirelessly to bring a proposal to the city that will serve as a catalyst that our community deserves. The team provided a design that will instantly increase the density in downtown, providing the people necessary to support a vibrant downtown. The plan provides development on the City Hall site similar in height to Water's Edge, a plan for a hotel and other publicly accessible uses on top of the Bluff. It provides the transparency and access points to connect Cleveland Street to Osceola and to Coachman Park. And most importantly, the plan provides the unmatched private investment this city deserves after the city's own significant investment in the Imagine Plan and Coachman Park. This team does have local roots, the technical experience, and the financial wherewithal to provide my children the same amazing downtown experience my mother had when she would have a soda at Brown's that I had when I rode my bike to the main library and snuck out to eat at the Maz Brothers lunch counter. It provides an opportunity and impetus that the citizens did not support 22 years ago when we sat and watched those election returns at the Capitol Theater, that we want a different result today. We want a different result this year for downtown Clearwater. The proposal provides a plan and resource sensitive to our environment, inclusive of the community, and a path to bring the entirety of our community to Coachman Park and the treasured Bluff. Most importantly, this team and the investors behind it are committed to Clearwater and making this a reality. They're committed to including every single one of the speakers who are here today, who, for whatever reason, personal or otherwise, may think that the other plan is the right one for Clearwater. This team is committed to including everyone. We look forward to working with all the constituents and the other teams, who are obviously so invested and have so much enthusiasm, and we so hope that you give us the opportunity to show what we can do. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we're going to take a 10-minute recess and then come back because we're not going to get this done in 29 minutes, and we have a rule that we break every two hours. So we'll take a 10-minute recess.
Purchasing ordinance, a series of formal score sheets, formal criteria, formal voting, et cetera. But when it comes to real estate development within the CRA, the legislature has not put that on cities intentionally because development proposals are so radically different from each other. We get into design questions. What looks beautiful to me may look ugly to someone else. We get into questions of parking, as we've heard this evening. We get into questions of the importance of timelines and how important is that to the development process? We get into questions of mixed income communities. What does that look like? We get into the sustainability portions of the buildings. There are a thousand different variables that can affect someone's judgment over what the best project is. And because there are so many different variables that people are going to weigh differently, the legislature has not created or imposed a rigid statutory process on us. That's both a blessing and a curse. It's a blessing because it means that cities have the freedom to craft a solution that's right for your city, in this case for Clearwater, which is our city. But it's a curse because it means that when people are looking for rigid criteria, they don't always exist. That's why, of course, the mayor proposed criteria to give some guidelines, some structure to the conversation. Council isn't required to go with that criteria. You're not required to use the same factors or weight them the same way. But it is, I think, a logical way of coming up with some framework for the conversation just so that each of you can have a sensible conversation with each other about what your priorities are. The final thing I want to say is that there's been some discussion this evening over this being a rush process and a surprise process. Mr. Jennings and I were not here a year ago when the initial process was done. However, from what I understand of that process, and council, who's here, can correct me if I'm wrong, that process was pretty well advertised and pretty well known to everyone. Council received several submissions, as I understand it. They were vetted publicly. There was a negotiation process that began, and ultimately, council was dissatisfied with the route that negotiation took. Council exercised its right at that time to decline to move forward with the entity with whom council had directed negotiations. The reason I say all that is because this is not something that came up unexpectedly. This is something that has been discussed for quite some time in the public sector and in the public sphere. It's been known to the development community for quite some time, and my understanding, Mr. Jennings can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that staff has actually been reaching out to developers and actually addressing the development community over these past several months. So I'm not sure it's fair to say that this is some entirely rushed process. If this was the very first time we were doing it, I think that would be a more fair criticism. I'm not sure that's fair, given the circumstances, the lead-up into this. So that's all I have to say.
I appreciate that. And, you know, there were not any of these submittals were in the first round of RFPs. One was going to be, but they had a technical glitch. So none of the three applicants this go-around were in the original. And I can tell you, I was not impressed with the submittals that we got in the first RFP. And that's why we stepped away. And staff was given direction to go out and start talking to as many developers, quality developers. And frankly, all three of the submittals this time were significantly superior to anything that we saw. I think there's good, better, best, but I was really pleased with the caliber of all three, the financial wherewithal of the different groups. So with that, what I would like to do is hear from Mr. Jennings and staff. And then what I want to do is open it up to council to ask any questions of staff and/or the applicants that are here, and then we can have the discussion and hopefully make a final decision. Mr. Jennings?
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to make one clarification. Of the three proposals that came in, staff did not actively solicit any of those, the three groups. We were very responsive to questions that we received from those groups, but we did not seek out the three parties.
Mr. Jennings, one thing before you go on. There's just two other things I want to address. First of all, there was a question, you know, of referendum. This is ultimately going to go to the citizens of Clearwater. This is going to be a recommendation of the city council to go to the citizens of Clearwater. They're going to ultimately decide. So there was a question of whether it went to referendum, and in fact, it does. There was a question of bias, which I don't think there's any bias up here. There was also the statement that questions were not asked. Each of these proposals were a couple hundred pages. I know that I spent literally the entire weekend going through all of them and looking at the financials and the designs. You know what? When you read everything, and somebody even mentioned the fact that they didn't know what the breakdown of units was, but that's interesting, it's all in there. If you actually read things, you get answers, and so then you don't always ask questions. So I just want to point that out. All ears.
So the city staff review team met last Friday, June 10th, to review each proposal in depth. That review team included myself, Michael Delk, who is the assistant city manager and led the Imagine Clearwater planning efforts, Gina Clayton, our director of planning, Tara Kivitt, who is our director of engineering, Denise Sanderson, who is our director of economic development, Amanda Thompson, who has been working with the CRA, David Margolis, our city attorney, Michael Fueino, who's assistant city attorney, and Matthew Midich, who is also an assistant city attorney. Jay Ravens, who is our finance director, was not able to attend the meeting but has reviewed all of the financials for the recommendation. The recommendation that we discussed on Monday was unanimous of that group, and that recommendation was the Bluff, the Bluff Group or the Gotham Group. And it really centered a lot on a more visionary approach to the properties. And what I really mean by that, and certainly we have the staff here that were part of that, is when you look at the buildings in which they are mapped out, in fact, I was just looking at the Elevate buildings again, we really liked the view corridors of the Gotham proposal. And what I mean by that is, when you drive down Osceola, you want to actually be able to see the water. And the way that the other proposal is constructed, it's more rectangular as opposed to being able to see through the various corridors of the proposal, the various proposals. That was one of them. I mean, it's, I think it's really critically important for us to maintain access to the water visually as well as physically. As I said on Monday, all three groups are immensely qualified. They, this was a very difficult discussion and very difficult decision on staff's part. I think Mr. Debb of GSP did a very good job, but we did not feel as though his proposal was dense enough. We wanted to see more units of housing. And also, you know, the $3.5 million offer price was substantially lower than the appraisals. Elevate Clearwater, it was, it's a very good proposal. They have a lot of really good components in that. The Music Hotel concept is a, is a really interesting proposal, significant retail space. We are also sensitive to the cannibalizing of the Cleveland Street businesses. We wanted to make sure that the, the first floor retail in any of these projects were not going to overshadow Cleveland Street. So you, you know, you solve one problem and you create another. And so that was one of the other items that we discussed. So Mayor and council, as I said, it was a unanimous decision by the review committee of the Gotham Group, their Bluff proposal, and we stand by that.
Anything else to add, Ms. Thompson or Mr. Debb?
I would echo virtually everything that the city manager said. I would just say that from an urban design standpoint, I think it was, from the staff standpoint, you know, pretty clear in terms of our belief as to how the proposed Bluff development. I think all of them had various pros and cons, but I think the Bluff development integrates with the Coachman Park and what we are building there very, very successfully. I think it, if we can manage to get to that point, it will be a spectacular integration between the Upland Bluff properties and the private side development and with the park. I think that's particularly true at the south end of the park, and I think the Bluff proposal, which includes the elevated walkway and the completion of the South Bluff Walk, is an extraordinary component of something that was highly desirable in the park design to the community at large, and, and I think was one of the most regretful things that we had to kind of value engineer out. So I think that from the standpoint of the public's concern, and I'm talking about the, you know, this park belongs to 120,000 residents, and so we need their, we need their imagination and their excitement about this park. I think that will provide an extraordinary public place. So I'm very happy to see that being added back in in that concept. So I think from an urban, urban design and integration with the park, it really achieves a lot of the original objectives that we had for the activation, the connection of downtown to the waterfront, going all the way back to 2014.
Anything, Ms. Thompson?
I, I think it's all been said, but I'm happy to answer any questions about parking or the incentives, that kind of information.
Questions for staff or the applicants? Vice Mayor?
Okay. I have quite a few, but I might not do them like all in a row. But I had a couple of, well, one question. I'm going to go to my David Margolis questions first, my attorney questions first. Mr. Margolis, who I enjoy working with tremendously and trust very much, which is good with your city attorney, can you explain to us the possibility or reality of being able to develop a lease agreement and put it on a November ballot initiative?
Sure. You know, we talked a little bit about that on Monday, and this is a good time to get into some additional detail. If we think about the three proposals that we received, Mr. Debb's proposal from GSP contemplated a straight purchase from both sites. Gotham's proposal indicates they would like to do a purchase of both sites, but they said they were open to discussing a ground lease as to the Harborview site. And Elevate's proposal expressly asked for a ground lease of the Harborview site and a purchase of the City Hall site. From my perspective, there are some major differences between a ground lease and a purchase, some of which are practical, some of which are legal, you know, some of which are logistic. One of the challenges is going to simply be on the financing side. I do not believe, and I know Gotham's team is here and they could answer that, but I do not believe that Gotham at this point has done a significant financial analysis of what a ground lease would look like, because their basic proposal is for a purchase. And they've indicated they're open to discussing a ground lease, but I don't think that that was part of their pro forma or something that's contemplated right now. And so one issue would be if council does vote to begin negotiations with Gotham and council is also interested in exploring a ground lease of Harborview, I don't know that there's enough time to make the November ballot. So I think we'd have to talk about what that timeframe would look like. As for Elevate, as I said, they've specifically proposed a ground lease already. There are some differences, however, when it comes to presentation on the ballot. As I opined on Monday, if we do lease one site and sell the other or propose to do that, I do believe those will have to be presented as separate ballot questions on the referendum. Number one, to comply with the single subject rule. When we propose an ordinance, whether it's an ordinance amending our ordinances or ordinance amending the city charter, we normally have to comply with the single subject rule. And the second reason is because we have a 75-word limit on ballot summaries. The purchase agreement slash ground lease agreement slash development agreement will undoubtedly be much longer than 75 words, but whatever I say in 75 words must fairly and accurately inform voters of the essence of the deal. And we're not going to be able to take 75 words and tell people about a ground lease for one site while a sale is for another site. So there are some challenges involved with splitting them, both in terms of the timeframe of exploration for it as well as the splitting of the referendum questions. If that is the direction from council, we'll certainly explore that option, but I think council has to know going into it that number one, we are looking at a split referendum question. Number two, if one question passes and the other fails, what is that going to mean for the future of the Bluff? And number three, if council votes to begin negotiations with Gotham and we want to have a ground lease of Harborview, that may involve a longer process. Again, they're here to answer that question, but I'm not sure at this point they've undertaken that analysis over extensively what that would look like. We may not make a November ballot, which may or may not be a deal breaker for council, depending on which direction you'd like to go.
And the other piece of information you gave me was that lenders would not lend to a developer who is developing rental property, 600 units or 350 units. They're not, it will not, I mean, it's not going to be on leased property. It has to be on purchased property.
It would be very difficult to obtain financing for multifamily housing that is located on leased property. Not say it's impossible. There, of course, are always lenders out there that will do anything, but it would be challenging for most developers to get that type of financing. And so the context in which that's important is that from my perspective as a lawyer, let's say the council wanted to do a ground lease for both properties, both for City Hall and for the Harborview site. That's easier from a referendum standpoint, because I can probably say all that in 75 words. I could probably comply with the single subject rule and put that in a single ballot question. However, from a financing and practical standpoint, I think that all three of these respondents are going to find it very challenging, if they're looking for financing, which it appears that they are, to finance multifamily housing on dirt that they do not own. And so that is the concern.
And so I guess a question we didn't ask the developers on Monday was, if the question was split on a ballot and one passed and one didn't, would you still continue with the development of whichever one passed?
That would be the $64,000 question, as it were.
Can they answer that now?
Council would like to hear questions.
Is that how you want to do it? Like just if we have individual questions?
Someone from Elevate want to come forward, answer that question?
Yes, we, we would do one development and not the other if one passed and one didn't.
Okay.
Your name, please?
On behalf of Gotham and Denenzio, yes. Obviously, the enthusiasm for the bridge makes that a little bit more complicated, but hypothetically, yes.
Okay. Can you sit there, because I have one other question related to timeline, especially for you all. Do you want to answer to the concerns about the extended timeline of your proposal versus the other?
I'm Matthew Pick with Gotham. So in terms of the timeline, the idea is that the first, the first phase would take about 30 months to build, which is, which is what we've shown you. And then if we did go ahead and phase it, which is what we think is the most financeable, given that it's going to be hard to absorb more than 300 units once, we would anticipate breaking ground sometime between 12 and 24 months after, probably 18 months is the sweet spot. So that, and it would take 20, probably 27 months to build the second phase. So that puts us at roughly a 45 to 48-month construction period.
Mr. Margolis, can you explain selling with deed restrictions?
Sure. I mean, anytime we sell any property, we can negotiate deed restrictions with the buyer. Deed restrictions are going to be promises, essentially they get recorded in writing and documented, not only in writing, but also recorded with the clerk of court. Those promises run with the land in most cases, meaning that even if another buyer came in and took the property, they would still inherit those same restrictions. Deed restrictions can be negotiated. They can involve a wide variety of different things. So for example, there could be deed restrictions on any developer to say that they must maintain the property as, you know, a publicly available hotel, or must maintain it as a publicly available apartment. And if that's what we negotiate, that's what we negotiate. So deed restrictions can be customized to the land deal. You know, I've seen some that are pretty elaborate and some that are just a one or two sentences.
Enforceable timelines, what does that mean or look like when you have it in a contract?
In terms of timelines, so there's a couple things to think about. One is going to be the timeline toward transfer of the title, meaning the actual giving of the property to the buyer, and they take the deed to the property. And then the second set of timelines involves the construction phase. In most cases, we would want to transfer title either at or before the commencement of construction. However, we do have a proposal from Elevate in which they, we would not transfer title though that they're serious, and that's when I know that things are moving the way they need to move. But there are other timelines as well, such as commencement of vertical construction, such as certificate of occupancy, which comes at the end, and even stabilization, which comes after they've opened and after they're getting ready to lease up their apartments. So we can put as many milestones in there as we're willing to agree with, with the developers. As far as the enforceability goes, the mechanisms are as strong as what we negotiate. So one super-strong mechanism of enforcement would be called a reversionary interest. It would essentially mean that the property would revert to our control if they don't meet those timelines. I don't know how that's going to be received by either of these developers. I think probably a more moderate and reasonable proposal, at least in today's world with labor shortages and material shortages and things like that, would probably be a liquidated damages clause, and so we will impose penalties financially for not meeting the milestones that we have in there. And that tends to incentivize people to get things moving. A final point on enforceability and timelines. One of the reasons that I've mentioned a moment ago that I like transferring title earlier, once a private property owner takes title to our property, now they're hooked with property taxes. And being on the hook for property taxes tends to inspire people to move quickly, miraculously enough. Whereas when they're not paying property taxes, sometimes there's not as much of an incentive to move as quickly. So as the city attorney, from my perspective, if we're selling either site or both sites, I would prefer to transfer as quickly as possible. So we get that tax revenue and they have the incentive to keep things moving.
And wasn't, you know, when you said Elevate did not want to transfer title until five years after, and they're not, they're, they're not making any payments to us until five-year, a five-year mark as well?
The five-year transfer is for the City Hall site, so that's something that's going to have to be negotiated, but the proposal, at least in writing, that they've given us is a five-year transfer. That's when we would get the payment. That's when we would start collecting taxes from the City Hall site. Now, for the Harborview site, keep in mind, they're proposing a ground lease, and so that proposal is going to be a percentage of operating profit, and so a very different proposal altogether.
And, and going back a little bit to splitting the question for the referendum, if it's a lease, one is a lease and one is a purchase, do you have enough time and bandwidth to negotiate and formulate a lease as well as the sale agreements by July 6?
It will be very challenging. I'm, I'm not going to lie, this will be a very, very quick undertaking by governmental standards. I'm willing to invest whatever time and work is needed with either of these developers, because I believe very strongly that this project, whichever developer we go with, can be transformative for our downtown. I don't want the opportunity to slip away from us with either of these developers. I will put in the work. I will be here on the weekend. I will stay late at night. I will work through Independence Day. I can't guarantee results, but I will do my best if that's the direction from council.
And when you said you can't guarantee results, so if we, if you, the team gets involved in negotiating, you negotiate whatever the contract agreement is by July 6, and we get it July 6 and then have to have a meeting July 7 at 8:00 or 9:00 a.m., if you don't think that that is in the best interest of the city, you will let us know that?
What I anticipate with either of these developers, we're going to have to have, we're really going to have three different documents that are involved, three core documents, I'll say, involved in this entire transaction. One document is either going to be the purchase agreement for both parcels or ground lease, and again, if it's split, then one purchase and one ground lease. The next document or set of documents will be the development agreement, and the next set of documents will be the ordinance that proposes the referendum question. As far as the discussion on July 7, what we must have done by that point will be a couple things. Number one, I must have by then a first reading of the ordinance proposing the referendum question. That means that the basic outline of the deal needs to be something I can intelligibly summarize by then to put it in the 75-word ballot summary. I don't necessarily need to have every single detail worked out by July 7, but I at least need to have enough that when council comes and meets on July 7, that each of you can vote on the referendum question. What I anticipate having with that will be a development agreement that has been tentatively agreed to by either of these developers. That development agreement will have a lot of additional detail in there that's not in the ordinance itself. However, the development agreement is subject to change and is subject to amendment after July 7. So it will be more than a draft, but it will be something less than a final product at that point. I picture it being signed by that point, because the Development Review Committee meets on the morning of July 7. They will need to have a product that is pretty much tentatively done by that point so that they can review it, but there could be amendments that take place afterward. Keep in mind that for a development agreement, it must have a public hearing in front of the Community Development Board. That will not take place until July 19. So theoretically, there could be changes made in the development agreement between July 7 and July 19, or there could be changes made as a result of the CDB hearing based on feedback either from the CDB or from citizens at that meeting. But certainly, I picture that by July 7, we have the, you know, 80 to 90% of the deal is set in stone at that point.
Okay. And when you talk about those dates and the really tight timelines, just for transparency, because I know there was some question about how compressed this is, and, and it is a transformative decision, millions and millions of dollars and jobs and, and, you know, changing the, improving the direction of our city. But, but just, and there was a discussion that, you know, after we didn't go with GOVAN, that the, the world knew Clearwater had these lovely parcels and we wanted to develop them, and that we were open to receiving proposals for the last year or so. I didn't give it much thought, but thought, well, you know, we're advertising and it's out there and developers can send in a proposal if they want. I'm not clear if there was a real aggressive push with advertising and reaching out to developers, because we didn't have anything trickling in, right? But, but let's be clear and transparent about who is pushing for this decision right now and why. I mean, I think the why is to meet, it's obviously to meet a November ballot referendum, and it all backs, goes back to language with the supervisor of elections and CDB meetings. And so if people in the public want to grumble about a compressed time, you know, you need to understand where that's coming from and why.
Well, let's either do it in November during a general election where there's good turnout, or do a special election at some chosen time, which we have a history with special elections. They don't garner a lot of turnout. Or it's wait until they don't garner a lot of turnout, or it's wait until March of 2024, which would be the next city election. So, those are kind of the three different alternatives. Do you have any other questions at this time?
I do, I have just one more for David, I think, right now, and then I've got others. So, on Monday, I had made comments that there were attractive features on each of the developments. I particularly like, you know, music-themed sculptures or amenities in the park that ties into the amphitheater that's down there, Jazz Holiday and other things. And one of our comments today from a citizen said that that was proprietary ideas or intellectual, you know, ideas that couldn't be used if another developer chose to have a music-themed hotel or some kind of a jazz walk. Is that accurate?
I did hear that comment with interest. It's difficult to answer that without knowing exactly what they've trademarked, if anything. However, I mean, the concept of a music-themed hotel probably is not something that they could protect through traditional IP means, whether trademark, patent, or copyright. So I don't think the concept or a basic idea like that would be subject to IP rights. However, I don't know on what trademarks, you know, or other patents or copyrights they've explored, so I would not be able to answer that at this point.
I think that's all right now, thanks.
Councilmember Barker. Well, you mentioned it. What about the parking spots? 600 for 600 apartments? That's insane. So, how are we going to deal with this?
I'm glad you asked. I think one of the challenges for cities in transition as they're growing, which, living in different cities, everyone's on the review team and seeing that transition, is at some point, you have to decide that the city that you want to be, not where you are today. And what that means is you build for a walkable city, you build for supporting transit, and the reality is if we make it easy to drive, people will still continue to drive. And if we make it comfortable and provide ample parking everywhere, then people will bring cars. And the problem on the bluff was 700 parking spaces, right, in Coachman Park. That's what we had, 700 parking spaces. So people drove there, parked, they'd never walked up the hill to Cleveland Street, and then they left. And the city and CRA are in the process of building additional public parking across the street from this site, so there's going to be new parking garage there. There's a lot of underutilized parking now with opportunities for more structured parking. So I think the vision that you're seeing is absolutely on point in terms of providing enough parking. I think underground, you have to do it because the space above ground is too valuable, and the city has the funds to help offset the cost of that parking. The other thing is that the team has an understanding of all kinds of mobility. I think that's really important, too. So when you're looking at ferries, gondolas, micro-mobility, walking, cycling, you need a development team that understands how to utilize all those modes of travel and promote them. So I am not concerned about the parking, I think that's one of the highlights.
The other question I'd like to ask is, it's not for staff, actually, it's for all the folks here who are passionate about Elevate. Because I'm curious to know, if we go with the Bluffs, if we go with Gotham, would you support the project still? Would you vote for? So, this is our best chance to turn the downtown around, and you would say, no, I'm not going to do that because I don't...
This is more of a rhetorical question, if you wanted to show of hands, but I'm not going to give another 30 minutes.
No, that's what I was hoping for. Yeah, just to show of hands. Because I'm just curious to see if you want to just toss the whole project away if you don't get your preferred decision, and I think that's a mistake. I mean, we had a passionate group of people here similar to this when we had to choose who's going to run the amphitheater. Roomful of Ruth Ecker people. OVG was disappointed when they didn't win, but if they had won, you know, I would hope we'd still go to the amphitheater. This has been decades, decades, that the downtown has been a ghost town. This project can do it. I'm very passionate about Gotham's proposal. I think it's beautiful, I think it integrates beautifully with the park. I do believe 600 apartments is better than the smaller amount from Elevate. And I, you know, we all visited the property over in Tampa, and I can't remember the name of the property, but it was very impressive. I would, I mentioned on Monday, I'd love to see that on the aquarium lot, but if not there, and if we go with Gotham, it seems like there'd be a wonderful place here in downtown where we could fit that as well. So...
Are we having a discussion or are we still...
No, we're not. I'm just curious about the...
I wanted to jump in there. It's okay, for some of the questions, let's go.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Okay, well, I do have a question for Mr. Margolis. So, I went through, as everybody did, I'm sure, all the details all weekend, and it was really surprising to me when I'm going through the Elevate ask, it's very complex. There's a lot of little components to it for each site, and so I tried to put numbers to some of the asks, and, and as I said on Monday, this was the biggest ask than anybody, at least so far. I know that Gotham is, you know, they want to just buy the property out, and I've got some things I want to say about that later, but my question to you, David, is, one of the things is they want to abate the real estate taxes, 75% for the first five years of operation and 50% for the next five years on the City Hall site. And my question, is that legal?
Probably not. I have not said this publicly up until this point, because if council does direct us to begin negotiating with Elevate, I'd like to speak with their attorneys, whoever they are, if not seen any this evening, but I'd like to give their legal team an opportunity to share with me why they believe it is legal. But, just to give a little bit more detailed answer about that, because this is the first time I've been asked that question publicly. So, when it comes to taxation in general, cities only have those powers that are specifically granted to us by the legislature. In other words, we have no home rule ability to impose or waive taxes. All we can do is what's authorized by statute. And so there is really no mechanism in Florida law for us to abate property taxes, except for those rare circumstances where the legislature has authorized it. To give an example, there are certain types of tax abatement for affordable housing projects. That's a perfect example, especially if they're held by a nonprofit entity. There are other forms of tax abatement for other nonprofit charitable organizations who hold their property for 501(c)(3) type purposes. Those are specifically codified in statute. The only one we really have that's discretionary is the economic development exemption. There is an economic development exemption that allows us to abate 50% to 75% of property taxes. However, that exemption has very, very strict job creation criteria, and I did not immediately see anything in the proposal that would seem to meet that criteria. Ms. Anderson and I did talk about it briefly, and at least at first glance, and at the risk of speaking for her, I don't think she observed anything in there that immediately would meet that criteria either. So that is definitely a concern I have. Just as an aside, that particular exemption for economic development will expire two days before the election. As of November 6th or after November 6th, we will not be able to issue any new exemptions unless we go out for a new referendum in order to authorize new exemptions anyway. So even if this project did meet the criteria, it would actually expire before we were able to go out for referendum. So, so I'm hesitant to say definitively on the dais that it is completely illegal for this council to abate the property taxes, but I will say that I have not seen anything immediately in their proposal that would seem to authorize us to do that. But I would be interested in hearing from their attorneys on that, as to why they believe that this is statutorily permissible.
Okay. Well, most of the other questions were answered by, or at least asked by Vice Mayor Beckman, and I'm glad, because I had the same questions, they were answered, so I appreciate that.
Does someone from Elevate want to talk to the tax abatement? I know you're not an attorney, but you may play one on TV.
Ken Stoltenberg with the KD Keller Development. I think there was some misunderstanding as far as that. The property's going to pay 100% of the taxes. The CRA would rebate that same amount back to the property. So the property's always going to pay. This is something that, I did not make this up, I did this 22 years ago in the city of Orlando, it's very common for how they incentivize development. So, anything that, notion that this hasn't been done or it's not legal, we probably should have said the exact mechanism whereby the reimbursement would take place if that was an oversight, I apologize for that. But the property will pay 100% of the taxes when it is transferred, period.
So was your reference then, abating the city taxes? Because certainly, we can't do anything about the school board and the county.
Well, the school is different, the county is different because it's a CRA, so the city gets...
But their money is only for capital purposes in our CRA.
Okay. We would work with whatever mechanism would be appropriate, so the property would pay taxes.
Vice Mayor.
So are you saying you'll pay 100% of the taxes and then we write a check to reimburse you 75%?
In essence, yes. During those prescribed periods of time, and then it goes to 50%.
Right.
Yes.
You pay 25% of your taxes for the first five years, and then you'll pay 50% of your taxes the next five years. And you write us a check for the full amount, we reimburse.
To the CRA, that is correct, yes. Is that clear to everybody?
Anything else, Councilmember Albrecht?
No, that's it, thank you.
Councilmember Chata.
I've met with Mr. Margolis, not once but twice, and a couple of phone calls, so he's been very generous with his time, and so between Vice Mayor's questions and my time with Mr. Margolis, I'm okay at this point.
Okay. All right, then I will open it up to comments and discussion.
Can I stop?
Yes.
Okay.
Admittedly, I am coming from a very different perspective. I live downtown, I have businesses in downtown, and I, along with many, many people and organizations, have been struggling with this downtown. So that's the perspective I'm coming from. So with that said, I want to thank the three groups, I thought they were all viable options, but we had to select one. I did use similar criteria to the ones we discussed on Monday, and the frontrunners after going through the criteria were Elevate and the Bluffs. In many of the criteria, Elevate and the Bluffs were comparable, taking turns, beating each other up by a couple of points. But there were three criteria, actually four, that I found a very big distinction and separation. They were design parking, integration, and something I call responsiveness. So let's begin with the City Hall. I believe that Elevate has a true advantage by having apartment buildings that have been built before, right across the bay. I can see it, I can feel it. It was not just the development of a building, but he created or they created a community. And I think it's imperative to at least ponder over or consider that as an advantage, because it is not an abstract thing. They've built it, the kinks have been ironed out, and that will affect the timeline and the process and the ease of which it can be made into a reality. In terms of the Bluffs' two-tower design, I like the design. It's such a clean design with nice lines, but when I look at it, it reminds me of a modern version of an Art Deco building. And so when I think of integration, I don't think those buildings can integrate well with our city and the imagined Clearwater. I pictured them in Miami. And then there's a concern that I cannot ignore, and that is, what is the impact of having such huge density in a small footprint? And one of the examples is parking. And I understand about trends, but I live in a condo where there's a significant amount of seasonal residents, as well as a significant amount of residents that need two cars and two spaces but only have one. And I witnessed every day those musical chairs of the part-time residents trying to alleviate the stress of those residents. But these two towers will not have that flexibility, because these are apartments with year-round residents. And we're talking about 600 units. Downtown does not have the ability to provide all the services that we can walk. We don't even have a bank. So, even for, let's say, argument's sake, and we're going to be very conservative here, 20% of those 600, well, 600 units need two cars. We're talking about 120 cars that need parking in conjunction with all the other needs of that park. I think that's a burden that we can't ignore. Moving on to the Harborview, I prefer the silhouette of the six-story hotel versus the narrow 13th floor hotel. Again, it does not integrate with the library and the surrounding area. And I think it's a good point to kind of step back and think about this. Downtown Clearwater is very unique. Even its challenges are very unique, and we know that. We have been fighting this horrible narrative, the narrative of the dead, ghost town, the Church of Scientology Mecca. All these narratives have really impacted our ability to revitalize downtown, and we have to acknowledge that, as Mayor Hibbert has said, this is not a proven market. And so, having an identity is part of that discussion, and having a music-themed, soft-brand hotel, not only does it add to the brand and the identity of downtown Clearwater as a performing arts center, specifically to music, which is, I think, very appropriate, because we do have a history in music in this city. We have to capitalize on that, because for the longest time, we, the various and hundreds of people that have had businesses downtown and lived here, we've been struggling, and finally, I feel hope. And in my opinion, it began when Mayor Hibbert closed the streets, and the council agreed. I think that decision saved all the restaurants and the businesses in downtown Clearwater, and it created a different narrative. It created a different atmosphere and a destination. With that all considered, we need to understand that branding and understanding the trends should be considered when thinking of development of this property. The trends in tourism and in the use or spending of disposable income is experience. The Gen Zs, which will be joining the workforce, as well as the millennials, have pivoted the way we think and value things. And when you add the COVID-19 experience, even I, who am not a millennial but do have two Gen Zs, they've given me pause to reconsider how I look at life, and the way my kids and the future of our city think is less focused on possession, the more on experience, enjoying what's available to us. So having a hotel that gives us a unique experience with memorabilia from artists, with an interactive walkway, with a Walk of Fame, with a collaboration with Jazz Festival, not only brands us, not only helps us in marketing, not only helps us create a destination, but it is responsive to the trends of making this an experience. And so therefore, with all this considered, my preference is Elevate.
Councilmember Barker. Councilmember Bunker.
Well, I've already said that I'm very impressed with Gotham's design. Also, what is very important to me, and was key for me, looking at their proposal, was taking a look at not just what they want to do here, but what they've done elsewhere. This is a company with a reputation that has built wonderful projects already in New York and beyond, that has done just a fantastic job. And the fact that they are willing to come here and revitalize our downtown, I think is terrific. I really like Daniels and Festus and everybody at The Ring. I don't know that they have the same wherewithal as Gotham does and The Bluffs team. I mean, you had to cobble together a bunch of different partners, and then it's buy one, lease one, which makes things more complicated. I think we'd be better off with the vision of Gotham, so I'm voting for them.
Vice Mayor.
Okay. I appreciate all of the groups that submitted their proposals. You can be assured that I read through each proposal at least once. The ones that I was drawn to, I read again and again. I have them fully annotated, multiple questions asked on Monday and before, researched, even learned about IRR and hurdle rates, which I don't, you know, as an English teacher, I didn't use that every day. But I did put a lot of thought into this. And I make my, I might not have grown up here or gone to Northward School, but I love this city. And I look at this city objectively, and I make my decisions based on what's in front of us and the shared information. And I think, you know, that's the way I approached our, you know, management agreement with the venue operator, and that's how I approached this. That's kind of why I asked that question on Monday, does anybody have personal relationships or, you know, do you know these developers, ever have you talked to them before about this development? Because I want, if you have other information, share it. So we did share that, I incorporated that, and I'm, you know, have made my decision, what I would like to vote for tonight. Again, it's going forward with a negotiation for this proposal. I think The Bluffs is more attractive financially for the city, based on the information provided by the developers and researched by our staff. Elevate is asking for at least, it's been valued by our finance department, at least $37 million worth of those five incentives that I asked, what's the value, what's the value? It was followed up by staff with an approximate value of 37 million. I do fault Gotham for not articulating specific incentives that they would ask for, but the feedback that I got from staff is that 37 million is a pretty hefty dollar. And that's besides, you know, the $5 million for parking and tax abatements and all these other things. The Bluff proposal appears to have less financial risk, based on, again, based on feedback from city staff, financing of the project can be more difficult for the Elevate proposal for rentals on leased property. The Elevate project may be more difficult to negotiate in our tight timeframe, based on the number of players in the mix. And Elevate is asking for more upfront money, a startup of 2.7 million, zero interest, 10-year loan, and you don't make payment to the city until five years. So it seems like, do they have, you know, issues with startup funding to get things going, where it seems that Gotham has some deeper pockets and is ready to go? Other risks. Based on feedback from our city attorney, the Elevate lease proposal presents some significant challenges to work out lease details in time to have it put on the ballot, although he's assured us it's going to work 24/7, but it is more of a challenge.
Excuse me, you're out of order.
The Bluffs provides significantly more housing units as compared to the others. This is a big plus for businesses downtown. I know there's concern about traffic and parking. We do have access, you know, we do have a Peace Memorial parking structure that's coming up. And I do agree that there is a shift away from two-car families, especially professionals who would be working down there. And I'll tell you, you know, I live on Sand Key. I don't live on the beach, I live across the street from the beach. But those are all condos that people buy. They're like a third of the way occupied most of the year, a third. And I know that because the lights aren't on. And so those are people who are paying a hefty mortgage, unless they already paid outright, which they probably have. But, you know, I don't know, the aim certainly is to have year-round residents who have disposable income and are adding to vibrancy, but I'm not sure we're not going to have wealthy people who rent that and are just there part-time. But, you know, that's just an aside. I think The Bluffs is open to allowing for 10% workforce housing, meaning a studio apartment for someone earning $70,000 a year or so at 120% AMI. I think this is a, something to be considered as the team goes forward to negotiate. I appreciate that they put that in there. I think the hotel, the large conferencing capabilities is very attractive for drawing events. And I do like the music-themed hotel, I think that, but I think, you know, that can be incorporated into whatever development team gets the agreement. I would bet Jazz Holiday, that organization, would not say no to any hotel in the area that would want to incorporate their theme and support them. As far as sustainability, Elevate provided some very strong proposals for solar and EV charging and traffic flow, they should be commended for that. The Bluffs has positives as well, including lead, silver, and gold. And I would say now the direction that I would give staff, and I feel this from my heart, is that any developer who's developing high-end rentals, the hotel, the hotel and the rentals, those people that are going to be paying premium rent, those people are early adopters, they have EV cars, they're going to want EV chargers there from day one, and you, as a smart developer, I think, would put solar on every roof space, because you have common areas to cool, probably not heat. And you're going to want to have solar up there. And so I don't think that needs to be a little chip that we bargain with, I think that's good operating sense. And I would hope that you're not going to come towards us and say, yeah, if you want solar up there, you incentivize it. Or if you want, you know, 10% EV ready, or EV ready on day one charging, you need to give me a little something. I think your clientele is going to want that, and it makes good business sense. So, you know, that needs to be, from my point of view, if I was sitting at the negotiating table, that's a non-starter. You know, you're doing that because it makes good business sense for you. I don't think you can rent those things to high-income people without having EV chargers I think, you know, we need to work in details in our agreement for clarity on solar and EV charging infrastructure, addressing obstruction concerns by residents, if they have concerns about a bluff walk or view, shorten the duration of the project if possible. We talked about requiring a completion date, and ensure solid financials for the city initially and ongoing. So we okayed that $30 million bond today, and that's a $2 million payment every year for the city, right? Starting...
We won't know the amount of the payment until the sale has gone through, but, I mean, we did get an outstanding credit rating today. I hope it will be less than $2 million, depending on the results of the competitive sale, but it could certainly be $2 million, depending on the results of the competitive sale.
So we have, we have significant financial commitments, and we need to, I think, maximize the use of that bluff to activate all of downtown. I think Ms. Thompson makes a phenomenal point in that, you know, this isn't a suburban area. You don't get out of your car and walk, you know, 10 yards and you're at the storefront opening. This is our city. And, you know, I've spent time in Chicago, I was up in Charlotte a couple of weekends ago, you know, been to major cities. And, you know, when you go to a city in downtown, you park and walk to different places. You know, Chicago has a theater district, and you park in the parking garage, and then you walk, you know, a block, a couple of blocks or two, to get to where you're going. This is what we need to look at, as far as, you know, parking doesn't have to be two cars right out the door, you get to where you're going. It encourages people to walk up Cleveland Street if you're parking in the Garden Street garage, if you're parking behind Peace Memorial, you're parking in the county ramp. You get out and move and, you know, stop in those shops along the way, I think that can be a good thing. I think, as Councilmember Aldrich said, I think on Monday, the bluff walk is an incredibly attractive feature. And I love that we saw that in the Gotham design. Now, I asked that group here on Monday, looks lovely, first of all, who's going to clean that plexiglass or whatever, but also who's going to pay for it? Because you didn't have any ask about incentives or who's going to pay for it. I mean, again, the devil is in the details. That's what one of our residents said in the beginning, and it is. But I think that's something worthwhile, that I think the city, you know, could go in and share the cost of that for sure. I think it's incredibly attractive. I think we see that at Crest Lake Park, people love that boardwalk that goes around, it is used all the time. There's a feature about going over, is it Cleveland Street that crosses, that we'd have to cross by foot? And they've got, I think, I think it's attractive. And, and I think, you know, you need to keep in mind, too, that that bluff walk was part of what we approved in 2016. So people already like that concept. And so I think that's of value. And I think that's it.
Councilmember Aldrich.
It's always hard going after Vice Mayor Beckman. She's pretty, she covers just about everything and very well, because she asks a lot of questions, being a schoolteacher. And I'm not going to parrot everything she says, but I, I just want to let people, you know, the last few days, lots of emails, lots of phone calls from people all over around both issues. And one of the things that I said I was going to talk tonight about was, you know, our relationship with these people that are giving us these proposals. So I'll talk first about the Bluff projects. I don't know Gotham, but I do know Dustin Dinenzio, I know Jordan Behar, and I know Katie Cole. These are local people here in Clearwater. So the, a lot of the calls I got saying, well, why would you get a New York group come down, they don't know anything about Clearwater? Well, there's your Clearwater, right there. There are people that have been raised here in Clearwater. I mean, you know, you have a local architect that knows about design and what works best. You know, StanTech, StanTech is building our park, they're part of this group, and they know what's the best, you know, for design, they're, they have their input in it. Now, I got to say this about Elevate. Smart City Group, which I know as Daniels, Janelle, and Edmund, I know each one of those personally, they're very good people. And I want to say that Daniels has done so much for downtown Clearwater. I mean, his innovative ring was amazing, and the city participated in that. I know a lot of, back then, to give him the money, people were going, what is this all about? It's great. I've known about his music hotel design for over a year, because I heard about it before the last RFP a year ago. I'm a musician, and, you know, I grew up here in Clearwater with the Star Spectacular, which has, we have such a deep history in music in Clearwater. So it's very hard for me, this has been very hard for me, because I really was cheering Daniels on in their group to really get this done. But my job, sitting here, representing everyone in Clearwater, is to do the best thing that I think is going to be best for everybody. So without parroting everything that Councilman Beckman said, I'll tell you a few things that are real important to me. Again, I say, the most important thing here, and nobody's brought it up, is how the public is going to, how is attractiveness of this project, how is the public going to take this in November? Now, I've been through, I've been here all my life, I've been through a bunch of referendums, and I know Clearwater are very picky on their referendums. And I'll say this right now, it might not be real popular, but I can tell you, everybody that I've known growing up here mentioning Coachman Park, The Bluff, between Drew Street and Pierce, Osseo and the Bay, nobody wants to let go of that property. And I hope that we can go, whoever we pick tonight, however this goes, I hope we can talk about long-term lease on this, instead of buying the property, because I think that's going to be a negative come November. The city cannot advocate one way or another, it's going to be up to people on the diocese and people in the community to band together to say, let's get this done. So I hope everybody will jump on board with however we decide tonight, because it's really important for us to all stick together. We don't, we've had a bunch of failed referendums that were good ideas, but the public didn't understand. It's not going to happen. I ran for this, wanted to be sitting in this seat for this opportunity. This is one of the opportunities I wanted to, and, you know, it's a very hard decision up here, a lot of times, because I have friends on both sides, and I got to make a decision. I know that every decision I make, or we make up here, there's going to be people disappointed. But I'm going to, I'm going to ask you to forget that, band together and do what's the best for Clearwater. The reason I like The Bluffs, and had that much of a rating over Elevate, because, number one, there's more units, we need to have the units down here. I've been talking about this since early 2000s on the DDB, we need more feet on the street. 600 units is better than 388. You know, one of the things that I was glad to see come back in, as Vice Mayor has said, is this bridge. It's not just a bridge, it's a connection for bluff walk. And bluff walk was an active design from the very beginning we started designing this park, to carry people from one side south to north and north to south, whether you're biking, whether you're walking, and you walk that active edge. And I was so disappointed to see we dropped that out. This is a chance for us to put it back in. And I can tell you, I'm the one that sat up here when we talked about it and had discrepancies over the design, because there's a hill on both sides. Now, you probably don't know this, but if you're walking from Water's Edge, you're going downhill to Cleveland, and then you're going back uphill on the other side. And we need to have a bridge that connects it, so people can walk straight across, because that is the active edge of this park. That's the most important part of this park. And putting that back in, when I saw that, I'm like, yeah, I'm glad we're, I'm glad somebody recognized that we needed to have that. You know, the 15,000 feet of ground level retail and restaurant is real important, and I know they're not going to put in, they're going to put in something that'll be very good for, you know, for the bluff, because they're talking to people, the people are involved here, you've got Trudy, and John Cooper, who I grew up with, she was the... she was the owner of Outback Steakhouse, they have a beautiful restaurant on Swan that I've been to. They know how to run restaurants. They know how to run really good restaurants, and they're involved in this. You've got Coastal Construction, you've got Wildlife Quarter, that USF, you've got, uh, Valette Hospitality have great restaurants. So, I mean, I'm not saying that, that Elevate doesn't, but I think that the people they've put together here, we have a better chance of vibrancy with this. And other thing that kind of, that really disturbed me a little bit was the, and I say it again, this is the third time I've said it, is, is the ask from Elevate. It was very difficult to put that together, and it was a big ask. And it had some things I didn't know if we could do. So, Gotham, they've got a very good relationship with their banks in New York. They've done $3 billion worth of, uh, construction. It's a no-brainer to me. I mean, we don't have to guess if the project's going to be done. It'll, it'll be done. I wish it could be done in a sooner period, but you know, to, to be, the way I look at it, to be, the best it can be, I'll wait that extra period of time to get that done. Because I've got kids and grandkids here in Clearwater, and I want them to be able to see what Clearwater can be again. As I, when I was a kid, it was very, very, uh, vibrant place, and it hadn't been for a long time. And I'm hoping that this will, will be, uh, the first step of, you know, going to the negotiations and seeing. But I'd like to really see if we could push for a lease other than a buy. That comes in the second phase, I guess, of negotiation. We'll see if we can do that. I don't want two questions on the referendum. That'll, that'll be a bad thing. We want one simple question on the referendum. And so, let's see what we can do to get this done.
Thank you. Uh, I'm going to address a couple of things. First of all, um, there's one thing I take very seriously, and it's integrity. And there's been some questions. Uh, and so, I want to say, I know people on both groups. Met with them, given them feedback over the last several years. Uh, don't have one bit of relationship with them financially, not one person in either group. Now, Daniels is our landlord for my business and for the city's City Hall facilities, but beyond that, no relationships with anybody. I want to make that real clear. I want to thank Mr. Stoltenberg. We did, all five of us went over to Tampa separately, uh, so that no sunshine laws were violated, and went to his properties. And I am very impressed with him and what he has done over in Tampa. Uh, it is marvelous. No question about it. Uh, the urban design and some of the things over there, I think, are marvelous. When I found out there was interest from Gotham, uh, and I originally met with them back in February, Mr. Jennings and I also met with a very, another very, very high caliber group, uh, several times, and went through a number of meetings, and they were also going to bid on this. They decided not to, they did not want to get into competition. We explained to them, uh, that this is a competitive process. Uh, but I was also traveling up to New York and, uh, for other business, and decided to go see Gotham, because I believe in due diligence. That has been questioned. And I want to tell the people who question that, you can stick it. Okay? Because when I was in school, that's called extracurricular, uh, I changed my meetings so I could go up and actually see the product firsthand. And talked to my city attorney about it before, and our city manager. And if you want to keep something secret, don't tell everybody on TV, it just ruins the secret, you know? So, you know, somebody's missing their, some village is missing their idiot, and that person knows who he is. Um, and I'll leave it at that. But, you know, I think we've all done due diligence. These proposals were enormous. There's a lot of financials. That is my background. Uh, I did put a sheet together for me, because I like to be able to compare apples to apples. And so, to me, deal structure was important. I explained this on Monday. I gave it 20 points. Design was 10 points. Design is critically important in our downtown. Some people think we have an inferiority complex in Clearwater. Our beach is an economic engine for the entire region, and nobody's even close to us. We generate more bed tax in the county than anybody by double. And a heck of a lot more than Hillsborough, as far as just a city of our size. So, I don't have an inferiority complex, but I also want to get the right people here. Resumes, I think it's incredibly critically important. What have you done? Show me your work product in the past. So, I gave that 15 points and references. Sustainability, we made it very clear in the original RFP that we wanted LEED Silver standards. They didn't have to be certified, but they were going to meet those standards. Everybody was made aware of that. Public amenities, these are public properties today. I think it's critically important that these parcels continue to be accessible by our citizens, that this is a catalyst for our downtown. They're beautiful parcels. Let me say something about that. The referendum in 2000 is what got me into elected office. It failed. It is a tragedy that it failed. It was not a perfect plan. Guess what? There is not going to be a perfect plan. But I think both of these plans could work and be significantly better than what we've seen in the previous referendum and what was originally envisioned in the 2000 referendum. But we cannot afford to have another two decades lost. What a, what a waste if we do that. And I have to tell you, one of the things that disappoints me this week, is I've heard people say they love Clearwater, but if they don't get their way tonight, they're going to spend money to defeat the referendum. Don't tell me you love Clearwater, and then take your toys and go home if you don't win and try to defeat something. I challenge anyone to that one. Public participation, uh, basically integrating into the park, art, public space, restaurants. Both of the, uh, proposals have dynamite restaurants for restaurateurs that I love. I'd love a mix of both of them. I mean, Chris Pont, I think, is the finest chef that Elevate has in their proposal. Um, Okinawa and on Swan by the Coopers is incredible. Uh, financial strength, I gave 15 points. And attractiveness to residents of Clearwater, I gave 10. Because ultimately, all of you who are residents, uh, some of you are not, but those of you who are, you're going to ultimately get to make the decision on this proposal. And we'll be going out, talking to everybody, trying to show people why we supported what we supported. And at the end of the day, it was very close for me, but I think Gotham's design was superior. I agree with staff on the openness on the Harborview site from Osceola, and the way the buildings are oriented on the City Hall site, that it gives view quarters. And even though it's a larger structure, it's not monolithic, and I think it is better. Uh, I think that the resumes, there are some very talented people on both sides. I think Gotham's resume is, uh, impeccable. What they have done elsewhere is amazing. And I think we're fortunate to have somebody of their caliber. I think there's great public amenities on both sites. Uh, they're different in the way that they treated that. The financial strength, I think the Goldman Sachs, the JP Morgan, and the Wells Fargos that are backing, uh, Gotham really were a tipping point for me. Uh, I do think we are going into rougher seas right now. Uh, I've said that on Monday, I've said that probably the last three months when we've been talking about budget issues. Uh, I think that Gotham has the wherewithal, regardless of the economic conditions, to follow through on this. For that reason, uh, I think they are the ones that we ought to go forward to the citizens of Clearwater with. And I hope that everybody in this room, regardless of which team you're on, will support the referendum that we have in November. Because if you really care about Clearwater, this is the best thing to move forward. So, with that, I would entertain a motion.
I move we select, uh, the Bluffs, Gotham, to, uh, create their proposal.
Second.
Before I call the question, Mr. Margolis, I want to make sure, because of the short timeline, I am, I want to make sure you have all the guidance that you need. So, why don't we talk about some of the points that we want to potentially incorporate into that motion?
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Um, so, a couple of highlights from my perspective, which have been discussed already on the dais. Most fundamentally is this question of a sale versus a ground lease, um, as it pertains to the Harborview site. I am pretty comfortable, in my opinion, that if we are going to split it, meaning a sale of the City Hall as well as a lease of Harborview, that will mean two things. Number one, it adds a level of financial complexity. I would like to get some feedback, preferably before we adjourn tonight, from Gotham, as to how long it will take them to give us numbers on a proposal for a ground lease specifically. Uh, in addition to that, we do need to be prepared for two referendum questions, uh, if that's the direction Council would like to go. Um, I, again, the, the only way to avoid, the only way to have a ground lease of Harborview and a single referendum question, in my opinion, would be if we were to do a ground lease for both sites. But as I opined earlier, I think that's going to be an impossible ask. I don't think any of these developers realistically are going to get the type of financing they're looking for, uh, for multifamily housing, uh, when they don't own the land underneath. So, I think that's number, number one, is, are, is Council committed to this idea of a ground lease? Is that a deal breaker for you? That, that's one set of issues. The second issue that would be important to me in discussing this, uh, with Gotham, if that's the selection from Council, and Elevate, if that's the selection from Council, uh, is going to be the discussion on the 10% set aside for workforce housing. As we know, um, Gotham has indicated that they are willing to set aside up to 10% for workforce housing. Uh, however, they have not pledged to do it for free. Uh, and so, we would have to ask, uh, is that something that Council wants to make as part of our ask? And if so, is it something the Council is willing to subsidize? Uh, I will say that I did some just back-of-the-envelope math on that, as did Mr. Lane. Independently, he and I came up with around a million dollars a year in lost revenue if we do ask for a 10% set aside. Uh, that number is calculated because they're contemplating 600 units. So, if we have a 10% set aside, that means 60 units are going to be set aside for workforce housing. If we think about the gap between what someone's earning at, say, 60 or even $70,000 a year versus the market rate of what Gotham is proposing on the Bluffs, and to a slightly lesser extent what Elevate is proposing, uh, it's going to be roughly about a million dollars a year gap. Is that something that Gotham is willing to eat? Um, or is it something that Council even wants to, to entertain? Um, and so, that was an important discussion. To me, those are really the two big things, the ground lease versus, uh, the fee simple transfer, uh, and whether the 10% set aside is something that's important to Council, and you'd like to have that, um, as part of our negotiation strategy, I guess I would say. Everything else, to me, I feel pretty comfortable is far enough into the weeds that I feel like I could get one-on-one direction. Um, for example, the timelines, uh, we all know the timelines are important to voters. I know it's important to every member of this dais. Uh, I know what mechanisms are available for enforcement of timelines. Uh, that part I'm not as worried about, um, things like closing dates and other stuff. The other stuff, in my opinion, is far enough into the weeds that I don't feel like we need
To negotiate
To negotiate from the, from the dais, so to speak.
Yes.
But at least as to those two basic issues, I, I would appreciate guidance from Council before we adjourn.
Well, I am not crazy about having two questions. Um, I'm just not. I, I think it makes it more difficult, and the fact that one could pass and one could fail, I think you lose the critical mass. I do understand where Councilmember Albritton is coming from. I think people have a, um, a greater connection to the Harborview site
Yes.
Uh, than the City Hall site. I mean, originally, and there was a comment made, uh, Monday that was inaccurate, I corrected at the time, but, uh, when Opus South built Water's Edge, it was always envisioned that they were going to buy the City Hall site and put up a twin tower right next door. That never came to fruition. Uh, somebody said that the project failed for another reason, and the reason the project failed, I'm just going to do a quick history lesson, is, uh, that the attorney, uh, left out a one paragraph clause that had to be in a HUD zone. And Opus had 80% of the condos sold with a 20% hard deposit. And because that clause was missing, they had to release everybody in late 2007 from their contracts. And guess what? In 2007, everybody said goodbye, and they lost 100% of the contracts. The other thing that happened was, they unfortunately built 10 feet onto city property. And that caused a mediation that ultimately was, uh, resolved. But those, those two snake-bit, uh, items were the reason that that project failed, not because of downtown Clearwater. It was just mistakes. That being said, uh, I think we've envisioned that we would sell, uh, City Hall. I know Harborview is a little bit tougher putt, so I'd like to hear everybody's perspective on that, with the understanding that we would have to have the two questions. I know where you are.
Okay.
Unless you haven't changed in the last 10 minutes.
No. Uh, I just, I just feel that referendums are tough. I know where people, I know what they're thinking. It's hard to let go of that land, you know? I've had calls on it the last couple of days as well to remind me of that fact, but, uh, the two-question thing bothers me too, but I understand we have to do, if we're doing a lease and a sell, gotta be two separate questions, but that doesn't bother me as, as, uh, I guess that doesn't bother as much as not selling, you know, the Harborview site.
Councilmember Beckman.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't like the idea of two questions and one goes and one doesn't. I mean, ugh. Um, you can put deed, if we sell both, you can put deed restrictions on both?
Yes. I mean, subject, of course, to the agreement of the, you know, of the other party, but I, I would suggest to voters who are concerned about selling the property, I'd be interested in hearing from a lot of residents as to the heart of the matter. You know, what is the very, very heart of it that they're concerned about? Um, and I would suggest that
I think one of those.
Right. I would, I would suggest that we probably all have a pretty good sentiment, even though I haven't been here very long, just from getting to know each of you and from some, getting to know, uh, some of our voters as well. I believe that those concerns can be addressed through deed restrictions. Um, but it would be a significant public education campaign as to what those restrictions are, what it really means, and to educate the public as to how the city is protected through those restrictions.
Can you remind me the, the duration? Is it 20 years, 30, uh, in terms of the deed restrictions?
Well, a development agreement, um, under Florida law is capped at 30 years. We actually cap them at 20 years under our city ordinance. Um, what I would picture in terms of deed restrictions in order to, I would probably not put them in a development agreement, more likely they would be in a purchase agreement. And so, in the purchase agreement, the deed restrictions could theoretically have an expiration date on them, or they could run forever, uh, depending on, subject to negotiations with the other party.
The challenge is communicating to those who want the lease, who are fearful of that loss of control. How do we communicate to them that we're actually doing deed, you don't have deed restrictions, it's going to be lost in that, in that
Do you want, does somebody want to just verbalize it?
Well
There's concerns out in the community that the property will somehow be transferred to the Church of Scientology.
Second. Thank you.
Sure.
What? Well, and, and I would say to you, Lena, or Councilmember Tishir, is that I think with whatever developer we go with, they have deep pockets to educate our voters. We have limitations. Um, we can't spend money to educate our voters. So, it's up to staff and us to go out and, and lobby and inform, but certainly the developer So it's up to staff and us to go out and, and lobby and inform, but certainly the developers have millions of dollars, millions and millions of dollars, and they'll want this to pass. It's in their hands to make it happen. They can spend the money on mailers and public information and, you know, I mean, it's, I'm all about voter education, right? People need to be informed of the facts, and we need to be very transparent. And I try to be incredibly transparent all the time. I'm not perfect, but, but, I mean, that's part of, it's in the lap of whoever gets the contract.
Well, I agree with you that that's important. We're going to have to do a lot of education, and that's a lot of just sweat equity. But I think we still need to make a decision as to whether the deed restrictions will carry the day, and we could potentially have one referendum item, or do we spend more time on trying to communicate why we're having two items and why it's important that both of them pass?
I think two questions is virtually impossible. It's at least incredibly risky. I've heard from a lot of people concerned about Scientology getting their clutches on, on these properties, and I don't think that's a possibility at all. You know, Mr. Margolis will, will work wonders, I'm sure. But, you know, I spent 15 years in LA, and Scientology has a big presence there in LA on Hollywood Boulevard, but there, they're surrounded by lots of other quirky oddities, and you don't really pay as much attention to them. Here, Scientology has, has scared people away, and Gotham's not scared. And I think, once we have the park open and the amphitheater and this amazing complex where we have people living downtown, Scientology is going to be buried here. It won't be as noticeable as it is now. It's going to be one element. And, you know, I, I think this is really terrific for the city and the best shot that we have to, to break this 50-year curse and turn everything around.
I don't know. I don't know. I, I, those, those people who have communicated to me, they have communicated real fear of that loss of control. And so I'm trying to sit here and weigh, basically, the lesser of two evils. Do we, do we risk, you know, the deed, thinking that the deed restriction is going to be enough to quell that fear? Or do we take the risk and have two questions and probably have it blow up in our face? You know what I mean? It's the lesser of two evils. It's, it's a hard decision. It's going to be all, I, I mean, I think if I'm leaning towards deed restrictions, we have to do a great job in educating the population.
Councilmember Albritton.
On the other issue that we talked about...
Hold on, I, I want to resolve this one.
Okay.
I want to have consensus on the direction we want to go.
All right.
So, you know, I've heard nothing.
Okay, 30 years. So then, that 30-year deed restriction versus two, two questions, best, best would have boiled down to?
And having one referendum item.
Well, no, no. David said it could be an indefinite deed restriction.
I'd rather have one question.
Yep.
Okay.
So...
And I'd rather solve the issue, you know, which means you're talking about selling the Harborview, but dealing with the other issues through the deed restrictions. I think one of the things that people are going to have to understand also is the revenues that are going to be generated by this. There's been a lot of complaints about how much money we've spent downtown over the years, which has been significant. And one of the most important things for me is making certain that downtown is self-sufficient.
Yep.
This will be a virtuous cycle. If these two sites get developed with the plans we're looking at, they're going to spin off more money for the tip, and we'll be able to use it to incent other things. More economic, more economic development, more affordable housing, and all sorts of other things. So I would rather make certain that we get it passed and get it passed right, and use the deed restrictions as the mechanism to make certain that we get the long-term results that we want. So that's where I am.
Okay.
I know I'm hearing that from Councilmember Bunker, Vice Mayor.
Yes, I agree.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So the next one would be the workforce housing.
I'd like to have that on the table as a negotiation. I'd like to leave that in the hands of the team to do that.
I don't mind laying them negotiated. I do not want it to be a deal killer. Because as I said, and I could sound really jerky, but I don't necessarily believe that you put affordable housing on the waterfront. And I think, I mean, there is a cost associated with it. Mr. Margolis, Mr. Lane have already identified that. We may be able to utilize monies that are generated from this site to address affordable housing in other areas of the downtown and the city...
Yes.
...in a more productive way and actually get more units than here.
Absolutely.
And that, that's kind of my perspective on it.
Mine too.
That was what I was hoping too, that we could work out some system where we would have money from this that we could build affordable housing nearby. We've got so many great areas downtown that aren't on the bluff that, that would be...
Agreed. I don't, I, I don't think that workforce housing should be a priority. I don't think waterfront view is anyone's right. And I think that we can funnel the so-called lost revenue to redirect it to other projects that would be much more feasible and tangible than, than, you know, ask the taxpayers of the city to, to, you know, to absorb a million-dollar-a-year loss to have workforce housing in a waterfront property. I think those funds can be better used in other ways and more efficiently so.
Councilmember Albritton.
Yeah, absolutely. That's what I was going to bring up, is, I mean, you got this, it's in the CRA, we could turn that and flip that money around, and we can make better opportunities and better opportunities in other places for that. I'd like to see that happen.
Do you agree with that?
I can live with it not being a deal breaker, but I want to make that available as a discussion negotiating point with the team. I think, you know, you make really good points about the money being able to used in other areas. I think there's a point where you have to live your values. And if you value that people who earn $70,000 a year, it's not that they're entitled to a view, a view of the water, it's that there's value in allowing diversity in our housing. When we have affordable housing developers come into our city, or housing developers, we ask for them to set aside a certain amount for a certain AMI, 80% AMI, 100% AMI. This is 120% AMI. This is probably most of our workforce in, in Clearwater, professionals who work here. You know, assistant managers, assistant department chairs, whatever they are, nurses. You know, so this, this is not affordable, you know, subsidized housing. Like I said, it starts at like $70,000 a year for one person. These are professionals with college degrees. And, and if we don't live our val, if we're asking those other developers to please set aside a certain amount for this AMI or that AMI, and we don't do it on our own public property, that says a lot. That says a lot about us living our values. We say, you know what, I want to squeeze every penny out of that development, and then I'll use that penny somewhere else more efficiently. Well, that other developer can say the same thing. And so I think 60 units out of 600 isn't too many. Maybe you negotiate for, you know, 30 units. But I think it, I think it's important to allow our, our negotiating team to talk about it. And, and I, I just, you know, I...
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
As a nurse, and that's one of the professions you keep mentioning, my values, I have never felt that I was owed a water view because I'm a nurse. And maybe it's because I'm a daughter of a first-generation immigrant, I'm too proud, and I certainly would not agree to having the residents subsidize me for that. I, that's not my value. I would rather that those funds be allocated in a more, in an efficient way, but I, I do have, I do have a moral issue with that, having that, that feeling or that right to, you know, oh, I'm a nurse, so I need a waterfront view. I don't agree with that. I would personally never agree to being subsidized, simply because of my profession. Not the taxpayers, uh, no expense.
I don't think it's, it's a water view. I think if we owned any other public property, I would want some set aside for any public property that we have multifamily housing at certain different levels of AMI. And it just so happens, this is a primo location. So we've set it at 120% AMI. Not 60, not 80, not even 100. It's 120% AMI. And, and again, you've got ideas about the value of diversity of people living in a neighborhood, in a community. We have people that are concerned about gentrification in our city, especially in our new up-and-coming CRA. And so when you do something like this inclusionary housing, it enriches beyond just, you know, having a nurse live in a studio apartment. And I don't think those people feel entitled. I think what it is, is the city says, I think there's great value in have multi-income levels living together, enriching your lives, learning from each other, sharing experiences. And that's just what I think the benefit is of having mixed-income housing and us, you know, helping that happen. But I, I just, it's not a deal breaker.
I'm hearing 4-1 right now. I mean, if we're going to have a vote on this specific item, I'm counting 4-1 on it. I mean, I don't mind leaving it in the negotiation, but if it gets to the point where the cost is too large, then I also give the latitude to our staff to bargain it out.
Maybe we can have like, you know, version A with it and version B without it or something, but I'd like, you know, Mr. Jennings, do you have any commentary about the ability to talk about that in negotiations?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that leaving it on the table just to, to, to talk about, I think will be helpful, and then, but I would agree that if it is a financial burden, then we would have to negotiate that out.
So those are the two questions you had. I think we've answered them.
Those are the two primary things. I think the rest of it, as I said, is far enough into the weeds that I feel comfortable that one-on-one feedback will be sufficient.
All right. So I have a motion and a second. Do the motion maker and the secondor agree to the single-item sale with deed restrictions?
Yes.
Okay. And then we'll leave the workforce housing in the hands of the staff. Councilmember Tishir.
So we're voting just on those two points, not on...
No, I'm asking for the motion maker and the secondor, and that can be a part of their motion.
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Just want to make a point.
Sir?
Obviously that I am on my own in my preference. I believe I was very clear in the reasons why I prefer Elevate, but I think now that I need to pivot and support the council and do what I can to form a unified team, because I believe that this is an incredible opportunity that we cannot miss, and we need to be united. So having said that.
All right. The motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. We've only got a couple of minutes, but do you all need a bio break? Okay? Okay. Then we'll carry on. Anything else, Mr. Margolis?
No, sir.
Mr. Jennings? Anything else? All right. Closing comments, I'll start from my right.
Okay. Last Monday, I traveled to Washington DC with Brad Miller from PSTA to advocate for $20 million through a raise grant for Clearwater Intermodal Center. The grant will be awarded in August, and we talked with our senators and spent time talking to staff in the USDOT and the FTA Department. Our feedback was really, really good, and with, we had more than several departments giving us the highest technical points on it. So I think what happened last time was, we had the technical points, we went in, but we lost on the, I guess, when it got up to actually the Mayor Pete and his, his team. So we think this time, they know us, they know that we, Pinellas County has never had a Tiger, a Build, or a Raise grant. Tampa, 12 times we've applied, not just for the Intermodal Center, but 12 different grants. Hillsborough's had 11 of them, we's had nothing, so we said, we don't want to make it 13. So please give us this grant. And we felt very good after meeting with everybody that that may happen. So the only other thing that I'm going to do is maybe ask my friend Ben Diamond to get his friend Mayor Pete a call, and then maybe a call from our Congressman Chris, right, to, need a little political push on this one, so. But we feel good that it may happen, so August 12th, we'll find out.
Well, thank you for traveling up there and representing us. Vice Mayor.
Well, I wanted to say, now that the room is clear...
All those TV watchers.
I know. Well, you know what?
All fine.
I mean, like you said, there were a number of emails, and a number of people who showed up at night, and I appreciate that from the bottom of my heart. I listen intently, I value opinions. I try very, very hard to make decisions objectively with the best information possible. You all know I ask a ton of questions, so thank you to everyone who weighed in, who spoke passionately. I feel confident that we made the right decision, and I'm happy to go forward and, you know, look very carefully at the development agreement, and hopefully they hear loud and clear what our values are and what residents want and expect. Certainly, as you said, there are a number of people on that team that are here, that are, have grown up here, they know Clearwater, and they know what our values are. So I'm confident all that will work out. But again, the devil is in the details, and I like to look at the details. And as a last message, which is, I say again and again, and boy, is it relevant tonight, is get out and check your voter registration, and make sure you're registered to vote, and check your signature match, sign up to vote by mail. We need you to vote in the primaries in August, and we need you to vote in November, as always, but it's very important for the city of Clearwater residents, because there's a good chance you'll be voting on a referendum for us. So please check your voter, voter registration. Vote Pinellas, votepinellas.com.
I want to thank Councilmember Tishir for, for making the vote unanimous, and I hope that all of the passionate supporters of Elevate will, will join us in, in making this referendum successful. And I'm looking forward to seeing everybody. Oh, oh, we got an email. I don't know if you put this in negotiations, but we got an email from somebody who wants, instead of two towers that we have, just one gigantic tower...
The Seattle.
Yes, like the Seattle needle. With a rotating restaurant. So see if you can work that out. That would be a draw. Other than that, I look forward to seeing folks at the Juneteenth celebration this, this weekend.
Well, this was a tough council for me, but I think that it's important. I respect and accept the majority, and my love for this city supersedes my instinct to be right. But it's important that we move on when we have different opinions and continue to respect each other as friends and as colleagues. This, this, this referendum is so important. Having said that, I do have great news. I am working closely with the summer camp children from Greenwood, as well as Ross Norton, on an art project, a very important one, the, the Donovan Fine Art Center yearly wearable art show. This is internationally known show. I usually design the last collection, but now that I'm a city council, I'm having a hard time juggling both. So what I'm doing is I'm having the children and I together... So what I'm doing is I'm having the children and I, together, we're creating a collection and it will be featured. I think this is a great opportunity to shine on those kids and I've been very surprised with the amount of talent that I have discovered. So I look forward to that and I expect all of you to be there August 27th to watch the show.
Thank you. I wanna thank the crew group. I had a chance to talk to them, that's Commercial Real Estate Women over in Tampa. They had about 700 people. It was one of the poorer decisions I made, but I did wanna represent Clearwater. It was the day after my knee replacement. My wife was ready to kill me. But it was a great group and we got to talk about some of the bluff items, some of the US 19 corridor, and we wanna know, those people to know that we really are open for business. I wanna thank all those who did come out to the North Greenwood CRA meeting, the final one. I missed that again, kinda because of this knee. We invite you to come out to Juneteenth. It's going to be at Walter Campbell Park this Saturday, 1 to 4, and then fireworks. Just be aware, we aren't gonna meet again. Prior to that, it's gonna still be out at Bay Care Ballpark and we look forward to next year it being down in Coachman Park again, where we truly light the candle on the inaugural celebration down at Coachman. So I wanna thank all the staff for what they have done on the items on the bluff and I wanna thank you in advance for what you are going to do, 'cause I know it's going to be a lot of heavy lifting on a very short timeframe, but I also have full confidence that you can get it done.
I see everyone looking at me.
You took the mantle, my friend. So with that, we are adjourned. God bless.[1548.71]